Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Iowa. For the record, I am Chairman, Commission Chairman Mo's Dunkle, presiding. Also present are Vice Chair Wayne Benner and Commissioners Grant Simmons, Ivan Reymar, Scott Torpey, Reed Weber, and Will Mitchell. Commissioner Torpey is attending remotely. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the presiding officer, I am to identify law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn. If everyone would please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one announcement before we proceed for those attending remotely. When you registered to attend by Zoom, you were notified that, except by prior arrangement and approval, testimony during a land use or other quasi-judicial public hearing will not be taken remotely. Those who wish to testify on these types of matters will need to attend the meeting in person. Another quick announcement, tonight's agenda was initially posted with a public hearing on city-initiated proposed amendments to Sandpoint City Code's Section 10-2-3-D and 7-3-10-H related to the timing and infrastructure requirements for short plats. That, this public hearing has been canceled. Do commission members have any additional general announcements or reports? Okay, hearing none. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. Commissioners, do you have any questions or are there anything that you wish to remove from consent? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Benner and seconded by
Simmons.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, we'll go Simmons.
I always call you by your first name.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and the consent calendar is approved. Next, we'll proceed with matters from the public. If you would like to speak on a topic to city business that is not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand it to staff. The forms are located on the table by the doors. If you're attending remotely and wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. Please note that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted just outside the count, outside of the chambers, entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful. Not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff. Not be disorderly or disruptive. No calling out, clapping, or holding up signs. The commission cannot take testimony on any specific planning or land use-related matter outside of an official public hearing. For the public hearing on tonight's agenda, please hold that testimony until the hearing is open. Comments and testimony opportunities during the meeting are for comments only. No questions or debate. You may contact the mayor or city staff during regular business hours if you have questions or concerns. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Each speaker will be allowed to have up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak during general public comment time? Or any hands raised on Zoom?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that's a lot of reading for that. Thank you. That concludes the general public comment portion of the meeting. Okay, next is a public hearing to consider the site plan review permit applications for two mixed-use multifamily and commercial developments located at 413 and 417 Church Street. I will now recite the order and the procedure for the public hearing. First, staff explanation of the subject and public hearing. Next, presentation by the applicant or their representative. Any question should be directed to the applicant at this time. Third, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Those who wish to testify are required to complete a sign-up form. The commission, excuse me, if commissioners wish to ask questions of the person testifying, those questions need to be posed before the person returns to their seat. And the order for those who wish to speak will be as follows. One, in favor. Two, neutral. Last, opposed. Fourth item, rebuttal testimony from the applicant or their representative. Final questions may be asked of the applicant at that time. However, if new facts are elicited, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Last, the public hearing will then be closed for deliberation. No new information may be provided after the hearing is closed. The questions and questions, excuse me, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, this is important. Any written comments received were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to the commission if received in time to do so. And I would add that there has been some that have come in after the deadline, and we have seen all those as well up through today. Before we do proceed, though, I would ask for confirmation from each commissioner that they have no conflict of interest or ex parte contact regarding this matter.
Mr. Benner? I have received an email from one of the city council members to bring up the question about elevators in the buildings. I don't know if that's ex parte, but that's...
Sounds like we're good.
Okay.
Mr. Weber?
None.
None?
No.
None?
None, and I have none.
And I have none.
Oh, good point. Thanks, Bill. And now I'll yield the floor to City Planner, Bill Dean, for an introduction of this application.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, thank you so much for taking time out for this hearing. Jason, if you could pull the PowerPoint up. I have a, for the record, I'm building city planner. I have a handful, a dozen slides to just orient you to the project. I think we're all familiar with it. We have a rather voluminous staff report that's intended to shed light on more of the details. So what I would like to do with this presentation is just walk you through the basics. And of course, we're here to answer questions. I'm, of course, just the point person for city staff this evening. There's a team of us that are involved in looking at development applications, namely myself and Brandon Staglen, our city engineer, Katie Keeney, our assistant planner, and of course, our director, Jason Welker. So together, we form a team looking at these. And again, I'm here to walk you through it and answer questions. Let's go to, let's go to the next slide. I want to emphasize one point. We had received an application from Oz Development to develop 413 Church. Soon thereafter, an application came in for 417 for the, for a very, very similar project. We decided to look at these together as a whole. I think it adds clarity for the community. We weren't doing, taking action potentially on one application and then very soon thereafter on another. We wanted to combine them. And importantly, Sandpoint City Code 914 establishes the requirement for a site plan permit for this type of development. Anything that's new on the ground that gets, you know, proposed to be constructed first has to obtain that permit. And that's an administratively administered permit. We do that at the staff level. However, it was very clear to us early on that this project is, is unique and it's in a special part of the, of the community, and it's garnered a lot of interest. So there are code provisions that allow us to elevate this to the planning commission, and that's why we did so, so that we could have this public hearing. And we think that better serves the public interest if people are vested in being able to participate, share their ideas, concerns, comments regarding the project directly with you.
So, Mr. Chair, so said another way, this, there's nothing that necessitated this having come in front of planning and zoning, right?
Other than our judgment that it would be, we'd be best served to public interest to do it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
So to the proposal itself, we've got two mixed-use buildings, a little over 2,700 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor with residential uses above. There is some civic space in front and some bike storage included. This project does not have off-street parking, aside from three spaces. And this evening, we're going to probably have quite a bit of discussion regarding what our codes require, what they don't require, and how the project may or may not conform to the city's comp plan and the adopted zoning standards. I think our staff report is pretty clear based on our staff analysis that it's a project that we felt was compliant with everything that we were looking at and reviewing. So let's go on to the next slide and just orient ourselves for those who might be watching or just learning about this project now. This is on Church Street, just to the east of Fifth. There are two lots located on the south side of the street, right across from the Umpqua Bank Building, the Sandpoint Center. One of the properties has a house on it. The other used to have a house, it just now has a shed. Otherwise, it's a vacant site, about .32 acres. Both of these new structures would stand out on the block, but they would not stand out in the neighborhood, in our estimation. They're both proposed to be 45 feet tall. The setbacks, if you're looking at the, both sites as one envelope, are about five feet from each of the side property lines. And the rear setback varies from five to 25 feet, depending whether you're looking at Building One or just to the west of it, Building Two. 45 feet is, is an interesting point. I think we should discuss a little bit this evening if you're, if you're interested in entertaining that conversation. Across the street to the north is a 65-foot-tall building that, my understanding, generated quite a bit of discussion. At the time, it was brought forward and discussed and ultimately approved. The Burn Cloud Building, that's, you know, a couple blocks away over on Pine Street, is a little bit shorter than this. It's roughly 40 feet high. So the zone district here allows buildings to be 65 feet tall. There are some restrictions on going above 55 feet in terms of setbacks and adjacency and what the building has to look like as it, as it exceeds 55 feet. And this development proposes to keep it at 55. So that's just, it gives you a sense of the bulk and scale of this building. I think it's important that we understand what it looks like and what it feels like, given its context. And some effort was put into the staff report to help illuminate how we thought it was code compliant and also consistent with what the comp plan says in terms of the type of development that is allowable in the downtown area. So let's go on to the next slide. So we're talking about studio, studio-in-one-bedroom units. These are small units, small apartment units. This is a building type in a, in an organization that we don't presently have a lot of in Sandpoint. There are small ADUs sprinkled out throughout various neighborhoods in Sandpoint. There are certainly multifamily units. And we obviously have single-family homes surrounding the downtown and even in the downtown and even adjacent to this development. This is something different. This is brought to us by a developer that has some success in other markets. And they can explain their interest in coming to Sandpoint. But this is something that would be unique and different, and it's intended to serve as filling a part of that missing middle housing that is so often talked about in terms of having a wider range of housing available to the community. Let's go on to the next slide. Want to be very clear, we've received a lot of feedback and comments, and I'm very pleased that we've had so many people show up tonight for this hearing. I think it's our decision-making, our decisions are approved the more we're involved and the more we get to hear directly from people who may be affected and live nearby this. The major overarching concern is the lack of parking. Tonight, we're not going to be necessarily litigating the policies that are in place. Right now, this is in an area of the city that enjoys an exemption from the parking requirements, and it was done very purposefully to try to attract this type of development and other development in the downtown core. Parking in, parking is expensive. It's a deterrent, it's a deterrent to the urban form that is trying to be created as established in our comp plan and our zoning ordinance for downtown. But we can talk a little bit about that. There is a separate planning effort going on. We've been working with the commission and council since January on an overall parking management plan for the downtown district, as well as looking at every code provision on parking as well, to see if we can, if there are any tweaks that need to happen. So tonight, as much as we may be interested in talking about parking, I just want to be very clear that this, this project is code compliant. We really don't have an ability to impose a rule that doesn't exist on this development. Other concerns we, we listened to were related to the building height, the unit size, the architecture, snow removal, even items as pedestrian as just loading and unloading. That's going to be, obviously, in a downtown environment, the loading and unloading, whether it's for a commercial business or a restaurant, occurs either in the alley or in the street when you can. There's really not a lot of off-street loading and parking for any downtown development. We did receive a couple of agency comments, one from Selkirk Fire regarding egress and evacuation. Obviously, this, this building ultimately, should it be approved, has to go through a thorough building code review. That's part of the normal process where fire and safety are addressed. Notwithstanding that, we have had conversations with our fire chief. He's aware of the development. He's, he's aware of the particulars and has not raised any of those concerns with the development team. Modern Counter G I S is sort of a standard letter they submitted to us regarding addressing and making sure that it's coordinated with them. So let's go on to the next slide. And like I mentioned a moment ago, we have, we have a code-compliant project in our estimation, in our evaluation. It didn't have to come to a public hearing, but again, pursuant to 914, we thought it was a better idea to do that. And since we made the decision to have a public hearing, we were compliant in the noticing there. We wanted to put a larger sign than we normally do, right straddling the property lines, send out notice of each application we received, as well as separately when, when the hearing was decided, we were going to bring this forward. And again, for parking, it is, it is a code-compliant project as relates to what the rules say on the books today regarding parking. Let's go on to the next slide, please. So the comp plan talks about the, the housing variety. It has, it has a chapter dedicated to land use and community character. We looked over these policies and goals. This is a newly minted plan. This was put in place after years of work last July. It's, it's hard to say if everybody in their minds' eye had a vision for what you see before you is what, what, what these policies would result in. What we have tried to do is look at this project and find ways to improve it so it could better fit in the, in the community and better fit with the policies and objectives here. Originally, when the applicant, you know, the applicants first came to us, the project looked a bit different, that there wasn't the use of brick, for example. There wasn't the civic space that we have grown accustomed to seeing in front of buildings in the commercial aid district. We encourage them to take seriously the, the neighborhood that they were in and try to pick up some of the vernacular of the buildings, but the use of bricks and the window treatments and the awnings to incorporate so that the land use itself could better fit, given the way it was designed. So this evening, we're interested in hearing from you if, if you think that, that test has been met as relates to consistent consistency with what the comp plan establishes for our, our goals for downtown. Let's go on to the next slide. So like I mentioned, it's a team. Brandon carefully reviews the, each development proposal for its compliance with city standards as it relates to infrastructure, namely stormwater, water, sewer, roads. What you see before you is just a snippet from one of the, one of the exhibits as part of the application. And Brandon has found this project to be compliant with the city's standards, notwithstanding the relative small number of car trips that are going to come from this project and the fact that, you know, the engineering team has a, has a strong understanding of the roadway network in the, you know, across the entire city, including in this environment. A traffic study will be commissioned, and that's just to double-check and to ensure that we're not missing out on a possible additional impact to a local intersection nearby. And that's really the point of having that traffic impact analysis done. That's something that'd be completed should this project move forward, a priority building permit, so that we could make sure that we appropriately scale the impact fee, if there is one, to what you see coming out of the project. So just a slide to sort of encapsulate that a thorough engineering review has occurred for this, for this development proposal. Let's go on to the next slide, please. So other committees are involved periodically on, on various matters that get brought to city staff in the land use development permitting context. Applications get sent to the pedestrian bicycle access committee on occasion, and this is one that was reviewed by that committee and that several recommendations were brought forward, which actually had an effect on making some changes to the project, namely ensuring that we have the separate access for the residential, commercial portions of the building. We want each land use to be able to function independent of the other. That's something that was modified through the project, and we're grateful for the, the commission's involvement and recommendations on that. Secure, accessible, first-floor bike parking was a biggie, just without, without any vehicle parking. It stands to reason that, you know, any downtown development is going to enjoy a lot of bike and ped activity. And we think it's just appropriate that the, that as much space as possible gets set aside within the structure and on the grounds for accommodating bikes. And if you're going to have a place inside the buildings, you know, accommodating e-bikes, which is obviously an emerging, in emerging in the, in, in the bike community, having a place to plug those in and charge them is appropriate as well. Let's go on to the next slide. We have a few more here. We have nine or 10 conditions of approval that mainly talk about the things that have to occur prior to either getting a building permit or prior to gaining occupancy, mainly related to infrastructure, which you see here. And let's go on to the next slide. A few more related to ensuring that if the building permit does go forward, it'd have to be in compliance with what you see here. I will make one comment regarding the last condition, number nine. That condition suggests that the alley is actually gravelled, but it's not. It's a paved alley. That was a, an error in drafting the condition of approval. We'd suggest that the commission entertain the idea, should you see fit, that the resurfacing of the entire alley from block to block be a condition of approval, number nine, should the project move forward. But I think we need to be careful with the wording because the alley is in fairly decent shape according to what we understand. So I think we'd want to have the city engineer sort of have some ability to determine what level of surfacing would be appropriate, should this project move forward. I think my next slide is my last slide, just to give you some orientation to the project. This is an action item for you, so you, you do have options. You can prove it with conditions or conditions as you modify them as you learn more from the hearing this evening. You could postpone if you'd like to gain more information on any aspect to the degree we can't answer those questions tonight. Or you have, of course, the option to deny the application. These are, these are actions that are taken after you make findings. So we're here to help you this evening by answering questions and providing some clarity on, on the process as well. So that concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions you may have before I hand it back to you, Chair. Any questions?
Before we take questions, please speak into the mic and state your name first, please. And are there any questions to?
Who, who else are we hearing from tonight?
Everybody.
Okay.
Everybody here.
No, no, I mean, in terms of the non-public agenda, was this it? Okay, applicant, okay. So my question is, are we allowed to ask you questions after we chat with the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can ask, ask staff questions all the way to the vote.
Thank you. I'm okay now.
Okay, I will now call to...
I'm sorry, I, I have a question for Bill.
Hey, Scott.
This is Scott Torpey. Bill, the, the nine conditions that you placed up on the presentation a moment ago, could you tell us, are any of those conditions, would any of those conditions have not been put forward by city staff if this project was not brought before the commission? In other words, are these conditions that you and other city staff would make in issuing a site plan permit?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. These would be the same conditions we, we placed regardless if this was a staff-level permit, a commission permit, or at the council level, they'd be the same.
Thank you.
Actually, Bill, while we got you up there, Commissioner Simmons, could we take a look at number six real quick? And just for the sake of clarification? Yeah, so when we look at this, that a traffic analysis, let's say a traffic analysis is getting done, and there is some sort of impact that's assessed. So if I understand the language here, applicant shall be responsible for proportionate share contributions to any affected city project, and proportionate share shall be determined by the approved traffic analysis. Meaning if, like, a new streetlight has to go in because of the increased traffic, they don't pay for the entire streetlight. They only pay for an incremental portion that brought it into needing a streetlight. Am I understanding that right?
Generally, yes. There's, there's, there's a lot that goes into when a, when a local government makes an exaction upon a, an applicant or a property owner. If we, the whole, the whole point of the analysis is to basically double-check that our, our network can handle the development. Keep in mind already, as a baseline, the development has to, you know, participate in the development impact fee program by paying its proportionate share of these impacts we've already collectively, system-wide, established through the, through the fee program. So in other words, when you pull a building permit, you have to pay the per-unit cost for water, sewer, storm, roadways, et cetera, to work on the system, the network. Notwithstanding that, when we have reason to believe that additional analysis needs to verify that a particular intersection or a particular area is going to be satisfactorily operating with the new development, we can commission the study and see what comes out of that. If a traffic signal, to use your example, were to come out of that, there would be a proportionate share the developer has to contribute. But it gets a little nuanced. The infrastructure has to be understood in terms of its, you know, the degradation that the development's going to bring compared to baseline, what that condition is, is today. In some instances, you may trigger an improvement that may be beyond their full contribution. It gets fairly complicated fairly quickly, but it's really fact, it's a fact-based analysis that you go into to size up what, what improvement is needed. Notwithstanding all of that, in the end, it's a proportionate share.
Got it.
That's, that's, that's the key thing to remember. It's a proportionate share. No, no one project can bear a disproportionate responsibility for the, for the impacts that are generated.
Mr. Chair, I got one more. I got a question.
Mr. Benner?
Did this go to any of the other committees, city advisory committees?
It went to the Ped Bike Committee, and now before you.
So it didn't go to the historic preservation?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any more questions from Commissioners? Okay, I will now call to the podium, the applicant or their representative for any presentation or remarks they would like to provide. For the record, please state your name, who you are representing as, as it pertains to this application.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. My name's Jared Forsyth. I am the architect for this project, projects, I should say. I am here with Oz Development, who is the developer for the project. As you've seen, there's, 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 the, the owner wants me to make it very clear there are two separate projects. This is not one project. This is two buildings, two different ownership groups, two different structures, the whole nine yards. We were asked by the city to put it into one for, for purposes of, of coming to the planning commission, things like that, but it is two separate projects. When we, when we first approached the city, they were very warm and welcoming about this project, so we're, we're excited about it. We presented it to them, provided a packet of plans for our first submission. And they came back with some, some things that they would recommend. Hey, take a look at some of our brick detailing. So we took a look at that. We added some, some detailing around windows and at the base and different things like that up at the cornice, things like that. Originally, what our goal was is to try to kind of capture the historic nature of a lot of the cool old brick buildings in town. nature of a lot of the cool old brick buildings in town and and try to kind of kind of bring that into a little bit of a modern building as well. So as you look at the elevations, as you go to the back, it kind of wraps and it kind of becomes a little bit more modern as you go around. That was that was kind of our idea. We did also with that, as as Bill mentioned, he did a very good job. Bike storage was something that was brought up. So we do have a a specific room in each building on the ground level that will be specifically for bike storage. That will be accessed from the ground level. Our the tenants will be able to come in, park their bikes, store it, secure it, and then go to their unit, or they can take it up to their unit. We have a we we've done a lot of these. I've done a lot of these with Oz, and most people end up taking them up to their unit, but we're not sure how that will will happen here. As you can see, it is a as a mixed use. We're talking with different people, local people here to to put in some sort of commercial space there. We're not sure what that will be yet. We are in talks. Should say the developers in talks with a few groups right now. So that will be forthcoming, but it will be a commercial use there. The idea there is, as you can see in the center, there's kind of some tables and chairs. We we kind of want that 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 energy and that vibrancy to to kind of bleed out into that area between between the buildings and and kind of energize the street in a way. So whatever goes in there, we'll 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 kind of have that patio space there that will help to energize that. You can also see from the elevations, we we tried to take some of the signage items from different areas through town and some of the different detailing. We we tried to kind of bring into this this building as well. I know there's a lot of concern as to, you know, what this type of building is for and what it will be, you know, who will live here, things like that. Oz has successfully developed. Gosh, they've done well over 1,000. I've done about 800 roughly units of this nature with them in various communities in Arizona, Utah, and 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 hopefully now here in Idaho. And they're they're actually received extremely well. There's a huge need for this type of product in a lot of different areas. This is 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 really for workforce housing. This is for the 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 you know, teenager that moves out to go to college, wants to come back and can't afford a house or, you know, an apartment somewhere else because they're too expensive. This provides housing for for a lot of people that are in need, that that you guys need the workforce. We've talked with people in the community that have restaurants and different things like that in downtown. And there is a real need for 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 housing that is affordable. Now, this is not an affordable project. This is not a low-income housing tax credit deal. This is market rate. But because of size and things like that, it's it's affordable. And they they work, they worked very well. Trying to think. If the, yeah, I I can't think of anything else that I wanted to to touch on. If there's any questions you have, I'm more than happy to answer. And I know you had a question about elevators. If you want, I can address that. Or we can wait to another time, whatever you want to do.
If you want to address it right now, go ahead.
So per the IBC, which is the code we use, elevators are not required in a four-story building. We have never put an elevator in these types of buildings, and they always do fine. I know what you're going to say. You're going to say, oh, well, what about the furniture? There's not a lot of furniture that gets brought into these. There's a bed, sometimes small couch or chair, things like that. They're not big. I mean, they're they're intended to be for a a specific type of of people, right? You're not you're you it's very, very rare that we've seen somebody that has a child that lives in these. It's usually a single person or or a married couple or girlfriend-boyfriend type situation, and that's it. So there's very little furniture that goes in into these facilities. So I I think that answers your question. I can get you the code references if you want, but it's not required per code.
May I ask a question?
Commissioner Rimer.
Yeah, um, so with that on elevator, how do you meet the ADA requirements?
Good question. So per ADA, we are required to have 2% of the building, so each building, right? Units would have to be fully type A compliant. So in this, we'd have one that's fully compliant, and then all ground level has to be type B. So if there's an elevator, then every unit has to be type B, which is an adaptable, basically. In this situation, all of the units up above are are going to basically be a type B. Just the way we design it and the way we've laid it out so far. But it's only the ground level that will be accessible.
One other question. A bus stop, we have a a spot bus that runs around the town. But on your existing streets, there'd be no place where they could pull over without impeding traffic. Was there any provision ever thought of to somehow do an ident on the sideways walkways or something to allow the a bus pickup? Because considering you have no parking, and my my understanding is that meets current code. We have to look at some other alternatives for transportation. I mean, the city will say that they have 274 parking places or more available. But everybody has to understand that the city of Sandpoint is essentially a five-block by five-block city. Nobody's going to walk five or six blocks to park somewhere else because of there's an existing parking place somewhere else. I'm just bringing this up. I mean.
Yeah, yeah. As far as bus transportation, that's something we've ever discussed with the city. So I'm not really sure. We'd have to bring that up with with Bill and others. That's not something that we've 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 discussed. And Scott, have you had any conversations on that? Okay. Okay, I I I personally haven't had any conversations, but the developer may have a little bit.
Commissioner Rimer, there, the closest spot bus stop is about a block and halfway on on Third Street, actually. Yeah. And there are ongoing conversations with Spot Bus. In fact, we have a meeting with them next week, not about the specific project, but about possible route expansions in Sandpoint.
Okay.
And there there, you know, we we were driving around before we came to the meeting, and there's lots of public parking within, you know, a couple of blocks. I know, I know that's.
Even in Sandpoint, obviously.
That's a, that's a, I probably shouldn't have even mentioned that, I guess. But again, there's Oz Development is not doing anything that is not permissible by code. We are asking for no variances. We are not asking for anything. And as you can see in the staff report, every bullet item is laid out and it's approved. So we're not trying to do anything. We're not asking for anything.
That wasn't a senior reading, man.
Well, I know, I know. I just wanted to make that very clear.
Commissioner Mitchell.
You you mentioned that there's two different ownership groups underneath yours, the Oz structure. What's the, and that these are two different projects? How will they be? And what's the timeline for the completion? Are they going to be built as one? Are they going to, is one going to be built, rented, and then the second project started afterwards? What's the?
The the idea would be.
Just wondering about that for the impact to the neighborhood during the construction.
Yeah, the the idea, they're they're, we're still trying to figure that out a little bit. One, one school of thought is, is we go in for permit on building one, so the building on the right, and then we get comments back, and then we address those comments in both one and two, and then submit those back at the same time. So during construction, it would be footing foundation, footing foundation, frame, frame. So they'll they'll go simultaneously. Finish within, I don't know, month or so of each other, something like that.
Thank you. And one more question.
Commissioner Mitchell.
How many bikes can you fit in the storage unit, in the storage spaces that you've provided?
We're currently working on that. It it, there's a lot of different bike stores you can get and 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 how you lock it. There, as you saw in one of the slides Bill had, there's the requirement for us to put in some some charging outlets. So we're still working through that a little bit on like how many outlets, things like that. So I mean, we we can get a decent amount in there. And it it depends on, do we go too high? Do we? There's lots of things we could do. So.
A question on a loading zone for this commercial space. Is that proposed on the street? Or in the alley?
Yeah, that that would probably, I mean, we could, it it could be the alleyway. So if you kind of zoom out just a little bit, I don't know if that can zoom out there.
Can you zoom out, Jason?
So there is a sidewalk you can see be between the in between the two buildings, kind of on the left side near building two that goes basically the length all the way up and back. So that's where where any loading would be.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Simmons.
So from my perspective, there's an interesting nuance here, which is if we think about this development fits well within comp plan of urban density downtown, it gets footsteps downtown. And and there's just a lot that's sort of right with it from that perspective. On the other hand, within a town of 10,000 or so, specifically within the urban area, downtown area, it's just a heck of a lot to absorb at once. You know what I mean? And so from having done 800 of these or so, like you had to have budded up against this in some other area. And what's sort of the experience been, whether it was Arizona, Utah?
You know, they they really haven't had a whole lot of issues. A lot of them, we've done in the Salt Lake area. And Salt Lake is, I don't know if you've been down there lately, but it's inundated with new apartments.
Yeah.
But these rent really well because they're they're affordable. Right? That's that's the key. And that's.
What is sort of the unit economics on this? Like, what's a 275 square foot studio going to go for?
Uh, that, I don't know. I I do you know what?
Property manager. Pointing exactly where that's going to be here. We don't know yet, but we're typically on the low end of market.
How many numbers zeros are we talking? The three? 1,500?
Yeah, oh, it's going to be lower than that, for sure. But still working through, right in the middle of it right now with our group cornerstone that manages most of our properties.
Gotcha. Uh, sir, if you're going to speak, you'll need to be up here.
Appreciate it.
So let's make sure.
All right, Scott.
Because it's hard to pick up what you're saying.
He also needs to identify himself for the transcrabble record.
So virtually, everything you've said is really not heard.
Do you want, I can repeat it if you want. So so basically, you heard it, but basically, they're working with their property manager to determine that it'll be south of 1,500, like you said, quite a bit south of that.
Question? Might I ask a question?
Commissioner Rimer.
Excuse me, have you considered any offsite acquisition of area for parking?
That is something that they have talked a little bit about.
Yeah, right across the street.
What was that?
You have one right across Fifth Avenue that was built for the bank.
It is something that have discussed. I don't know. I I don't think they've fully engaged a lot of people yet. They're still working through that, talking with their the property manager as well and saying, hey, what do you think we should have parking wise, things like that? So.
Could I ask another question?
Commissioner Mitchell.
You 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 mentioned that you're, again, two different ownership groups. What's? I mean, I know it's hard to foresee 10 years into the future, but does Oz, Oz development, which is opportunity zone, I take it? Do you guys manage, do you maintain ownership of the buildings after 10 years in which you accrue benefits in the Oz zone?
Yeah, so their goal is to 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 build and hold. Yeah, long term.
Commissioner Torpey, do you have anything to ask?
My question was asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
And Commission, just be mindful that if the applicant chooses not to rebut any of the public testimony, this is your last opportunity to ask questions, so make sure you've asked them.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm good.
We're good. We're now prepare for the, prepare to proceed with the public hearing. First, for those who wish to testify in opposition to approval of this application due to concerns regarding parking, please be advised that the city has received nearly 100 written comments regarding this development, most of which rely relay concerns regarding parking. The commissioners have been made aware of these concerns through the written comments received and posted to the to the project page on the city's website, referring to within the staff report, including in tonight, included in tonight's meeting packet, and have had an opportunity to read all the all of those comments. While the public is permitted to testify on any relevant matter related to this application, including parking, in the interest of time, please do not provide repeat testimony this evening on a point that has already been made by another commenter. If your concerns with this project relate to parking, please be aware that the development is within Sandpoint's residential use parking exempt boundary and pursuant to city code is exempt from off-street parking requirements applicable outside of the boundary. Therefore, this body has no mechanism for requiring the development to include off-street parking. If members of the public in attendance are interested in weighing in on city code provisions exempting developments from off-street parking requirements, we would like to invite you to or attend, this is a plug for a future meeting, so pay attention. We'd like to invite you, and please, all of you show up, because it's really nice to have a lot of people here. June 17th, Planning and Zoning will have a meeting where staff will present an ordinance amending this section of code. As recited earlier, I will first call on those who wish to testify in support of this application, then those who are neutral, and finally, those who are opposed. Again, it's, again, if you wish to testify, particularly on testimony that would not repeat comments already made, please complete a sign-up form and hand it to staff. Please indicate on the form whether you are in favor, neutral, or opposed. Also, city policy provides that the presiding officer may allow gifted time during a public hearing, where you may gift your time to someone else. The person gifting may also may do so only one time. The person receiving the time may receive only one gift for a total of up to six minutes. If you were gifted time, please state as much when you begin speaking and state the name of the person who gifted you their time. Both must be here in chambers and both must complete a sign-up form. Otherwise, each speaker will only have three minutes. And I will cut you off. So the timer will show when your time is up, and that is the time to be done. Please note the rules of decorum as recited earlier are in effect, and I I understand you like to say stuff when other people are speaking, but this isn't really the time to do that. So let people speak, and when you have, if you have time to speak, then you'll get your opportunity as well. So we will now move on to. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up in support?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just one moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, first we have Molly O'Reilly.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Molly O'Reilly, live in Sandpoint, and I use my car maybe once a week. We need housing downtown where owning a car is optional, where people who live will be customers for downtown businesses, stores, restaurants, entertainment services. For downtown residents, most daily goods and services are within walking or cycling distance. And COVID brought us very convenient delivery to the door, which is still in place. So you'll want to require loading zones on the street in front of these buildings to assure that this works and a place for packages to be safely left. Spot has nearby spots and stops on both its bus routes. Third and Oak, both green and blue stop there. At Sixth and Church, the green stops, and it goes to Schweitzer and Walmart. So you can get the library, Walmart, Safeway, Yoke, Super One, Schweitzer, the hospital, all accessible on a free bus. And and they provide, Spot provides pair transfer for the disabled who are unable to use their regular routes. Those loading zones will come in really handy if anybody needs that. Those loading zones will come in really handy if anybody needs that service. This project makes real sense. Providing vehicular parking costs money, which is added to the rent. And there are really a lot of people who don't need a car or don't need one very often. And I believe these buildings should provide, so we want to make biking and walking really work here. And so I believe these buildings should provide at least one secure indoor bike parking spot per unit. They didn't say how many they were providing inside, you can require that. And they talked about electric charging for e-bikes, that's really important. Someone on an e-bike can go anywhere in our region, anywhere. Um, so the other really important thing is to get to the building easily by walking. And for that, you want good lighting and you want to be direct. Every out of direction, having to go around something adds time and in the rain, the snow, the heat, it's not so good. So if there's a pathway between the front and the back, it needs to be direct, well-lit, but not intrusive lighting that is hard on the people upstairs. And they show the buildings with light-colored sides, and this is really important. And I I encourage you to require that because where the units face each other between the buildings, if the buildings are dark, those units are gonna be really dark.
Thank you.
Any pathway.
Was up, thank you.
Will be dark. Ah!
Goes by fast.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Dave Vermeer.
Hi, my name's Dave Vermeer. I own a small business here in downtown Sandpoint.
Where do you reside?
What's that?
Do you reside in town?
I do reside in town. I apologize, I reside in Sandpoint. I own a small business in town in my 12th year of ownership, and the last four and a half years, I've lost a third of my employees, basically due to lack of housing. I've tried increasing compensation, I've tried increasing reducing responsibilities, but a project like this would be huge to put at least 100 potentially people for downtown, and not just for my business, but for all the retail businesses. We're closed two days a week. I can't tell you how many days I run into somebody that says, hey, I tried to come to your restaurant, but you were closed. We could really use some employees. Uh, somebody made a comment to me in the restaurant about the number of cars. What are we gonna do with all the cars there? Over half my employees don't own a car. So I feel like this is a perfect opportunity to get some more service workers downtown, retail. Uh, that that's my first point. My second point is there are two new businesses in the last two years that have opened on Pine Street in the 300 block of Pine, so a block east of of this project on the other side on Pine Street. One is the Burnclaw, Great Crepes and Coffee, and the other one is Forge Pizza, Great Pizza. Uh, the fire department puts out an occupancy rating. The occupancy rating for the Burnclaw building is 73. The occupancy rating for Forge Pizza is 113. That's almost 200 people that would be going, that would be in those businesses almost every day of the week. So it seems to me I haven't heard one complaint about parking from almost from the capacity for 200 people to be in one block. I don't see how this is, this is going to make much difference. And I think I was at a parking meeting that was invited to you. Jason was there and and how many parking spaces did you, I forgot. How many parking spaces did you say we have that are unused?
Um, we can't ask.
I'm sorry. Okay, my apologies. But anyway, I'm in favor of this project, it would help downtown businesses immensely. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's it for in favor.
Uh, do we, do we have anybody signed up to speak as neutral?
We do, we have Meg Skibitzky.
Hi, I'm Meg Skibitzky, I reside in Sandpoint. Thank you so much for allowing this public hearing, I realize it was not required. Um, and I think it was very respectful for all involved to to offer this opportunity um for the public to to weigh in. So I'm a physician and I own the medical clinic that is immediately adjacent to these buildings. Um, I realize that parking is a concern and it's a concern for me as well. The only thing I will add that I'm that other people may not add is that I'm there um 40 hours a week and I observe that parking in that area is a problem, these parking spots are frequently entirely full. Um, I have parking for my business, I went to great lengths to secure that parking. Um, I completed an ADA renovation um and spent um almost $100,000 for my six parking spaces so that they would be accessible to my patients, many of whom have mobility uh limitations. Um, the uh, the alley is the way that my patients access the clinic. Um, and so if uh if that alley were to be blocked, my patients would not be able to receive medical care. So those are, so the reason I'm neutral, however, is that I am a small business owner and um ensuring uh access to employees is a very well real concern. The job market um to hire employees is very tough, particularly in medicine. Um, and so uh I do not think I would have been able to hire staff were, did they not already have housing in town, had they not already been uh longtime residents of Sandpoint? So I'm some in support of the fact that it would offer affordable housing, which would really help the business owners downtown. Um, but there are concerns I do have about accessibility for the surrounding businesses and um I completely understand that um that parking is not required um by law, but I do think we need to to just plan for the impact of this project and try and um and have the infrastructural that that will support all of the, all of the goals.
Thank you.
Can I ask the?
No, you can't.
Oh, I can. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Christine Moon.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to comment. I'm Christine Moon and I'm a resident of Sandpoint. And I just had a couple of comments. One is on the drawings um that I've seen of the buildings, the trees, the lovely, fully mature trees that are so characteristic of that part of the town are not portrayed. So I don't know whether there's a plan for those, to preserve those trees in in the front of the um two pieces of property that are there. That would be one comment. And the other comment would be um a question about ensuring that the demographic that these are really targeting um is actually who rents those spaces. So they've been described as um hostel type housing, they're they're small, uh the studio apartments particularly, and I'm wondering whether seasonal um people from outside of town might be attracted to those to rent them for recreation rather than having them be uh fully available to workforce um people. And it also occurred to me that these um spaces could be attractive to retired people. And of course, having no elevators um sort of precludes um a lot of us retirees from moving into the third or fourth floor and um but in the event that they need to be, uh those buildings need to be fully rented, that would be a group that would be able to um use them and but the lack of elevators might be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have no one else that signed up as neutral.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak in opposition?
We do. First up is Elise Boyce.
No, I wasn't going. Hi, I'm Elise and I am a resident of Sandpoint. And um I appreciate this meeting, this is my first one, and I appreciate just hearing more, all the different perspectives on things. I will say, I just did a little bit of quick research of just that the average American is of course a car owner. I am gonna be talking about parking, surprise, surprise. Um, I will say that I do um, I do live um right downtown on South Fourth, right near the two new businesses, uh Burnclaw and Forge. Uh, and I will say that we have already felt an impact of parking with those businesses. Um, I um definitely have been noticing a lot more out-of-state plates and parking has been more challenging. I also do live next to a multi um multifamily apartment with six units. And I will say um in that apartment, um right in those apartments right now, four people out um out of the six all have cars and they are similar in size to these units that are being built. Um, I have a duplex also right next to there. Um, and I will say that um in my 10 years of renting it out, I have a one-bedroom. Um, it's larger than those, but I will say every single one of my tenants, except for one in 10 years, has had a car. And couples, of course, often have two. So I just wanted to give um just some more info on what is happening already right in the neighborhood where this is all um coming up. And uh since I have more time, I will say that um, yes, 92% of Americans own at least one car, as much as we want Sandpoint to be a walking, biking town. Um, winter, I think, also makes that a little chat more challenging and that um in the same units next to me, um I will say that some of the people even in these um 300 square, um I forget if they're 200 or 300 square feet units, but uh there have been also people in there that have had more than one car. And in the stats that I looked up, there are uh 37.1% that sometimes own two vehicles. Um, so I think it's a great dream, I uh would be interested in that, I guess it would be the largest bike rack parking. Um, uh, it's it's great to encourage that, but I do think I'm, I am wondering where all these cars will go. Um, I think it is a great idea to consider that parking lot that is not being used, but again, that would have to be a whole agreement. Um, I'm not sure how many parking lots or parking spots are there, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Anne Giant Valley.
My name's Anne Giant Valley, I waved at Mo because I had him in second grade, fourth grade, and sixth grade, poor child by sixth grade, oh my. I am a resident in Sandpoint and um I do use my car, but I primarily when I, since I'm in pretty much the downtown core, I do walk a lot um to the grocery store and that type of thing, but I am concerned about parking. Um, I'm, I was concerned when the gentleman from Oz presented about ma- putting these buildings in um Salt Lake City, Mega City, and I don't know about in Arizona too, the size of cities that those were put in. Seems very appropriate for those areas, but um I'm not sure how many towns of 10,000 uh building or buildings like this have been put in. Um, the affordability is a concern when we have a um, a very low rate of pay in Sandpoint. I mean, I think $15 is pretty common, so somebody would be making $2,400 a month and having to pay $1,000 for rent, that's not a very affordable um housing situation. I'm concerned, as someone else stated, about the trees and plants in the area too. We really need to be keeping our green spaces. And a final question that I have is, so if somebody rents one of these, can they Airbnb it too? And I don't know if there's something that's written within that because they're not ownership, but you know, sometimes people do rent a place and then do Airbnb. So those are just my thoughts and comments and I thank you all for serving, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Steve Navarre.
Steve Navarre, yeah, I live in Sandpoint and I find that parking anywhere downtown can be a bit of a challenge. And then having, you know, 88 units parked on Church Street and likely most of those people have cars, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If I go across the street to what used to be Tango and, you know, you can't even find a place to park in there to go to lunch. And so I'm just really concerned about where all these people are gonna park their cars, what are they gonna do in the wintertime, and how all of this is going to be addressed. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Clay Hutchinson.
Good evening, uh Clay Hutchinson, I live in Sandpoint. I don't envy you guys on this one. Uh, so for in with increasing fervor, the last few years, we've been hearing about our failing infrastructure. Sewer is a big one. We're uh coming up on what we're told is gonna be a 60 million plus bond get floated to the city of Sandpoint because our sewer is gonna, is on the verge of failing. Uh, the city has also declined to provide water to outside communities, probably for some other issues like that. We all know that uh roads, uh the city is working on a parking management plan right now to address some of the parking issues, and I think this could very well undo that. Uh, I'm one who's not ever really felt that our parking issue in Sandpoint at this point is any uh tremendous concern. I always refer to people that if you want to know about a parking issue, go live in New York City, but this one's gonna start to to put us there, I think. Uh, the findings relative to the comp plan and the goals and the city code, uh I think that uh you have to have a very liberal interpretation of the comp plan and the codes to think that this is compatible. I think using the born home as an example, a comparative example is very disingenuous. Uh, you know, the height maybe, but in terms of the type of building and the size and the massing and the way that those buildings are used is, they're not comparable between the two places on Pine Street and this this at all. Uh, keep in mind that there are four, at least four, maybe five other lots in this block. And uh so if you want to compare this building to the bank building across the street, there's some comparisons there, but not to the to the uh buildings that currently exist on those blocks and the further blocks further south. So if you extrapolate this, if this gets passed, you're likely to see the other four or five lots turn into this too, which would be an additional 192 or more of these similar kind of structures in town. Uh, and once you pass something like this, uh very hard to say to the next guy, oh no, you can't do that, you know? So there's something to consider there. Bottom line is, I think this thing needs a whole lot more discussion, a whole lot more consideration than 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 a typical planning process um is is usually undergoes. Uh, size of units, uh you've heard some comment on that, these are 300 uh, 300, the biggest unit is 450 or something like that. The uh typical hotel room, national is is uh 300 to 400 feet, so these are essentially hotel rooms. And uh would you, would you, would you allow a hotel to go in this place with no parking? I I don't know the answer to that, but that's a question. Uh, we have seen some presentations uh this year where there's been some bait and switch in terms of what's been presented and then what gets changed later on. So if you do find your way to 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 approving this thing, please put in a whole lot of those conditions so that at least if it's changed, they have the ability, uh you have the ability to call uh call them back in and have more uh conversations about that. Uh, this obviously is gonna be up for the city council, please don't encourage them with a with a positive vote this evening, it needs more discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Christine Kester.
Hello, my name's Christine Kester, I'm a resident of the city of Sandpoint. And of course, like everyone else, I have a concern about the parking situation and I really think it's unethical that a developer would even propose a development like this for so many apartments without a place for their tenants to park. But that aside, um, one of my concerns would be, because I do also have a piece of property that's on the, that shares the alley, is currently, no one takes care of that alley. It's not the city property, nobody takes care of the alley, so I would like to propose that to, if this project does go through, that that building take care of plowing that alley in the, in the wintertime because otherwise it's just a big goo ball and um really bumpy in a couple spots. So that would be one of my big concerns and I definitely completely agree with Elise, Elise's comments about where people are supposed to park. My other suggestion for the developers would be if they do not want to um. My other suggestion for the developers would be if they do not want to make their building too lot into a parking structure, then at least on the building one, they should provide three more parking spots in the back alley for loading zones or whatever needs to happen there so that the alley is not blocked by U-Hauls or emergency vehicles or just people needing the UPS drop-off or anything like that because right now that alley is pretty skinny. And if the UPS guys there dropping off packages, nobody can drive back and forth through there at all. Matter of fact, there's a lot of telephone poles and things that are just boom right out in the middle of the alley itself that we have to dodge now. And I would strongly oppose this building also because it doesn't look like anything next door to it. So a lot of those things were already said, but my big concern is who's going to take care of the alley if this goes through. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Carrie Lee Knoke.
My name is Carrie Lee Knokie. I'm a resident of Sandpoint and a business owner in Sandpoint. My office is also across the alleyway in the Selkirk Building. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been said, so I'll keep it brief. I'm very concerned on how the garbage is going to be handled. I saw a blimp of something, but I could not read the fine detail of if there's, excuse me, a plan to get the garbage out. Waste management cannot go down the alley to pick up garbage from a dumpster if that's the plan. So I'd question a lot more about that. Loading zone for residences, how they're going to get their stuff in and out, their groceries, that's been mentioned. And a big concern about the local workforce that translates to all of us locals are the workforce and how are we treating the local workforce? Yes, we do need affordable housing and low-income housing. What I understand it, this is not either of those. $1,500 a month is not affordable for most of the workforce in this community. And it's kind of an insult, this is more of an emotional piece, but it's kind of an insult to treat our local workforce, that they'll be living in these little box, small spaces without any green space or anywhere to hang out. There's no porches or patios to be outside. And I guess I'll just say that parking is definitely an issue. From my office window, this is just a kind of a personal bitch, and I'll just admit it, but my office has a view of the mountains. I'm on the north side of the building, have a beautiful view of the mountains, and now I see the beautiful trees. And that is going to turn into a four-foot brick wall that I'll have to stare at and look at. So it's a personal thorn in my side. Not that that's really any consideration for anybody else, but it's something I'm going to have to live with. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have Frank Gruden.
My name is Frank Gruden. I'm a resident of Sandpoint. I'm very well vested here. I pay a lot of taxes. And I see one of your goals is to not disappropriately overburden services, maintenance, or the city taxpayers' responsibilities. It's also my understanding that the sewer that we have, the sewer system, is already at capacity. And so we all know, I know a lot of folks are worried about parking, but I'm more worried about where the poop's going to go. And I think that if that's not a burden on us as taxpayers, I don't know what is. We are developing, and I use that word loosely, I was a builder. I taught construction. I understand what's going on. And we're not considering the impacts of the residents of Sandpoint who have lived here a long time and contributed to this. We're burdening them with parking. I have a boat slip. I pay for the boat slip price. Now I got to pay for parking. Is that how that's going to work? We already have people that are dealing with taxes that are a burden. I'm a senior citizen. It's a burden. And I know, we know, the sewer is going to be online very quickly to be replaced. Can you imagine if everybody in this room took a dump at the same time? But what's going to happen when you have 88 people in an apartment or a couple and you flush the toilet at the same time? I mean, I know that's, you know, perhaps a bad example, but you got to think about those things. Where's things going to go? Who's going to pay the price? And there was a while where I was a handicap person. And I was in a wheelchair for 10 weeks. And, you know, how do you take care of those people? You don't have parking for them? It's ADA compliant, but you don't provide a place for people that are going to have a wheelchair? You don't provide a place for people that are going to have special needs or a place for people that they can load up without causing traffic problems? Not everybody rides a bike. You're going to rent to people that have disabilities, at least you better. And so not all of those people that have ADA disabilities are going to be on the bottom floor. Think about that. You missing a limb or something, you're going to walk up all those stairs? And I agree. The working class is more than teenagers leaving home and needing a cheap place to live. It's everybody. We need affordable housing. This is not affordable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Joshua Torres.
Hello, I'm Joshua Torres.
Do you live in Sandpoint?
And I live in Sandpoint on Fourth and Pine. So the city has been working very hard to address the parking issue in downtown and building solutions to help residents and employers. Now we have an organization who has two projects, both of which decided not to add parking. I live off of Fourth and Pine. Daily, I'm looking to get a parking spot. Many times, I end up parking a company's parking lot next to me. That overflow is coming from all the new businesses that are coming. I understand that this community is growing, but I drive, I'm a sales guy. I get around the community, and I need my car. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Matt Loem.
I guess my biggest question is...
Please state your name and...
My name is Matt Loem. I live in Segal. I work here in downtown Sandpoint on Cedar Street Bridge. And I came because I thought the topic was super interesting and I've given it a lot of thought. The question is, what does it benefit Sandpoint to create a project that is high congestion? I understand that the project is up to code, but of what benefit is it? And the question would be, it's going to create traffic, it's going to create parking issues, sewage issues, garbage issues, and what's it going to solve? And the question is, it's going to be affordable housing. That's what I keep hearing. Affordable housing, number one, this is all rental properties. A person who's renting does not have a relationship to a property as someone who owns the property. The units they're talking about building between $1,200 and $1,500 at 300 to 450 square feet a unit. Are we building dormitories? I'm not sure what it is that we think that we are building in this area. This is otherwise a very upscale neighborhood. The project, I think, is ill-conceived for what you think you're bringing there. Do you want, it looks like bikes are being a big problem. What about people hanging out, hanging flags from their thing? Who do you think's going to go here? Of course you need good housing for people, but talk about good housing and solve the housing problem, not with a developer, but with a group of community leaders exploring ideas about what does solve the housing problem here? If people want to own houses and people want to rent houses, people want to own apartments, people want to rent apartments. When you say this is solving, this is an affordable housing, you've opened up a topic to a real estate developer who is trying to develop a property. Good on him. I'm not against development at all. I stand for it. But you're mixing, the topic is being mixed. Speak amongst those who, creative community leaders, about deed-restricted properties, about, you know, what to do. You are building something strangely close to a dormitory. I work with youngsters. They're not exactly sitting on $1,500, and they don't want, for $1,500, they don't want 250 feet, 300 feet, 400 feet. It's small. They're talking about they don't need furniture, they don't need elevators. I'm not sure what project this is, but it's not good for that neighborhood. Take your time and think about this one carefully. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, no one else has signed up at this time?
Possibly one more.
Does anybody else have any slides?
If you have not signed up to speak and you wish to, you're getting down to the wire, so please make that happen now.
Mr. Chair, we have James Hanson.
What up, council?
Sorry, just one second for me to start the timer.
Please state your name and if you reside in the city limits.
My name is James Hanson. I live in the city of Sandpoint. Lovely little town. I was just watching online, glad I made it in time. And not one person brought up the culture of Sandpoint. Everyone that lives here loves the culture of Sandpoint. Is that culture a dystopian? Oh, I forgot to say I was against with a slightly more neutral view. The building was better-looking than I expected. But everyone that lives here loves the culture. And the culture that I moved here for and live here for is not a dystopian future where we live in tiny little boxes and don't talk to our neighbors. I know every single one of my neighbors' names, and I've lived in a box like that, and I didn't know anyone, and it was sad. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one more.
Zen, okay, sorry, Zen DeBrook.
I'm a Segal, Zen Cryer DeBrook. I'm a Segal resident, but I have my business at 101 of the Selkirk Building. I went to UC Davis in 1996. It's a bike town. Bringing 88 bikes into this town without bike routes, without any safe way for people to get around with the congestion we have in the summer, we already have people in our town who have to ride on the sidewalks in order to get through safely. The way that our parking is designed in a parallel way along our main streets is an incredible safety hazard. We already have issues with people trying to reverse out of these parking spots in a very dangerous way. We have a lot of elderly in this town. Unfortunately, it's already a challenge for them to be able to maneuver in their cars. To bring 88 bikes into this town in the wintertime is very dangerous. How do you carry your groceries? You're expecting people to be able to survive and live when we have winters where we have three to five feet of snow at a time. We have snowbanks you can't see around in order for you to be safe, in order to make a right or a left-hand turn into our parking spaces. The accidents that I saw were deadly in Davis. We had people that lost their ability to walk. I just want you to consider that our town is not prepared to be a bike town yet. There's a lot of maneuvering that would need to happen to make it safe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I don't believe anyone else has signed up.
Okay, one more time. Are there any members of the public who have not testified who wish to do so? This will be the last opportunity for you to speak at this hearing. Does applicant wish to offer rebuttal testimony to any of the comments made by the public? This will be the applicant's final opportunity to speak before the hearing is closed. Fonda, do you have something to say?
The only thing I would add is, previous to closing the hearing, if there are any questions of staff that might elicit new information that isn't just clarifying information of what you've heard, because once the public record is closed, you can't have conversation or discussion with staff on new information.
Oh, so if I have a question, I should ask it now of staff.
So should this order be our questions to staff, then rebuttal offered?
No, the applicant's opportunity is to rebut what they've heard in public comment. If they choose not to, that's great. If you have questions of staff to just clarify information you've heard in the public hearing, you can go ahead and close the public hearing, and you can ask those questions of staff. If you think you might have a question that relates to something you have not heard tonight, you need to ask that question now before the public hearing is closed.
I have a question.
Mr. Ramar.
Thank you very much. The width of the alleyways in the city of Sandpoint?
16 feet.
16 feet is not large enough.
So you've heard about alleyways, so that's something you can ask about with the public hearing closed, just for clarification.
About 16 foot. Thank you.
Okay, so commissioners, are there any final questions for the applicant before this hearing is closed? Any questions for staff that's in regard to anything that we've heard from the public so far? Okay.
Chairman, this is Scott Torpe. I have a question on something I heard you just ask us, and I'm not sure I heard it right. Do we now have the opportunity to ask the applicant questions?
Only if the applicant chooses to rebut the public and they...
That's right. Okay. And they have not done that, right? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Mr. Better.
From the staff standpoint, who's responsible then for putting in, say, a loading zone on the city street? Would that be Brandon or...
Downtown streets are the city's right-of-way, and you'll notice on First Avenue, for example, there are no loading zones along First Avenue, and trucks generally park in the middle of First Avenue to load and unload. We don't have loading zone requirements in our Commercial A District, so if the city chooses to designate certain parking spots as load-and-unload parking spaces, that's the city's decision to do so. So that is our right-of-way. We determine what happens on city streets downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aren't there loading zones in front of Cedar Street Bridge?
Those are city-destinated loading zones. I think there's one there. Yeah, 15 minutes or something. Yeah. That was, for example, that was not required to be put there by the owners of the Cedar Street Bridge. That's a city loading zone. In our downtown parking area, which includes 1,603 parking spaces, there are something like 20 designated loading zone spaces. It's actually, that number's in the parking study that you've seen at previous meetings. So there's something like 20 specialty, we call them specialty-use stalls, and that would be a loading stall that the city has designated within our downtown area.
Commissioner Weber.
Can staff speak to the parking study that was performed and the level of available spaces on a typical, I guess...
Yeah, we can speak to that briefly. So this body has seen some presentations on this, but maybe members of the public who are here have not been at those meetings. There was a 2022 parking study commissioned by an engineering firm, took place during a week in July, peak season. So we have really good data on public parking utilization. That's how I know that there's 1,603 parking stalls downtown. That's the total number across our parking lots and our street parking within a six-by-six block area. It's actually quite a large number. We know that during the peak mid-week hour, that's when our street parking is at its maximum occupancy. We have about 57% of those street stalls being used. So there's 1,054 general-use street stalls, and 600 of those are being occupied at the peak hour, mid-week. Off-street parking peaks during the weekends, when more tourists are in town, when more beachgoers are in town, and our off-street parking facilities are at about 90 to 100% occupied during the peak hour on weekends. And of course, that's mostly the city beach parking lot. But the downtown street parking infrastructure is at a maximum occupancy of 57%, meaning there are around 450 empty parking spaces in that six-by-six block radius. That's it. So those are the basic findings. 57% is our maximum occupancy, and throughout the week, it averages more like 40 to 50%.
Mr. Better.
I just tend to follow up on that just a little bit. Does that address the issue that the Highway District brought up about no parking in winter months overnight on the streets for snow removal?
That is in our ordinance at present, and that would remain in the ordinance, so there would be no overnight street parking in that downtown core in the winter. Correct?
Commissioners, any more questions?
Chairman, I have a few questions. This is Scott Torpey by Zoom. Taking the information we heard from some of the common comments. I do wonder, does staff, can staff answer the question regarding the existing trees that are on the property and what the future is for those trees? Does anyone?
Uh, we're gonna.
Does staff have a handle on that?
Yes, Commissioner, we're gonna have our city engineer Brandon Staglin come up and address that.
Uh, Brandon Staglin, city engineer. Um, yeah, so the plans that you saw in the package do show um, that there are three existing large trees along the frontage of both of these buildings. There's, I think there's two directly in front of building two and one um, in front of building one. The plans do show for removal of those trees, but the plans have not been approved yet. And the way that our process works by code, um, our code says that the urban forester, Eric Bush, has the has to provide written approval before removal of any trees within the public right of way, which these three trees are. Um, so that would be the process if this commission, uh, you know, could choose to add additional conditions um, requiring buyoff from city council and or the tree commission, which is also, I believe, supported by our code. Uh, says specifically in the code that um, the urban forester can get confirmation from from those two bodies before issuing removal of a tree.
Good, thank you. I I have a few more questions. Brandon, if you could stay there for you, I think. Thank you. Um, I heard one commenter suggests that the wastewater treatment plant itself is at capacity and made reference to, I think, what was not said, but um, what was implied was the collection system, the wastewater collection system, the pipes in the ground may be um, may be stressed beyond their capacity with eighty-eight dwelling units added to the system. So could you answer or are you able to address the question, is the wastewater treatment plant quote at capacity? Uh, and is the collection system at capacity?
Um, so to answer that, I just want to be clear. There's really two separate things that which I think you kind of designated. Um, there's a question of the wastewater treatment plant itself, and there's the collection system. Those are two separate questions. Um, with the wastewater treatment plant, we all know that we're 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 working on a plan right now to replace that wastewater treatment plant. It's aging, and we need to increase capacity. A lot of those capacity issues are due to infiltration during the spring season, not due to demand.
Brandon, can you explain what infiltration is?
Yeah, sorry. So, um, when we have clay soils and really high groundwater in Sandpoint. Um, so a lot of the pipes, uh, and connections to manholes are typically built as watertight or roughly watertight, but over time, they develop separated joints, cracks and so forth. And that allows, when there's high groundwater, it allows lots of clean water to enter the system, and it goes down to our wastewater treatment plant, and it overloads the system. So, um, uh, the the main problem that we have right now is due to that. Um, I will say that our master planning efforts have identified uh, plans for accounting for growth. So so when we, um, when we design these wastewater treatment plant upgrades, we use master planning data that accounts for residential and commercial growth and demand. Um, and the the question about the distribution system, um, where AKA the pipes in the ground that lead to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we also have a master plan that has not identified any capacity issues in the pipe that this will be tying into or in the direct vicinity of this project. So in other words, the pipes that this will be tied to have capacity.
Okay, thank you. I have yet another question. Um, garbage pickup was uh, questioned, um, how waste management will get down the alley? And I believe that there are dumpsters or something like a dumpster, maybe it's a compactor, I'm not sure, in each of the two buildings facing the alley with a door. Um, is that part of the plan review process to coordinate with waste management and ensure that their trucks and their people can are compatible with the alley and with the equipment that's being proposed in the building?
So, yeah, the just for anybody who doesn't know, the city of Sandpoint doesn't provide garbage pickup. We we contract through a company called Waste Management. Um, so the the building owner will have to get with waste management to figure out their um, collection um, mechanism, I guess. Um, I I'm not aware of any uh, section of our city code, and and maybe Bill can correct me um, from the zoning side, but I'm not aware of any section in our code that requires the applicant to, um, you know, provide that on the plan or or demonstrate that at the time of site plan approval.
Okay, last question, Brandon. Thank you for being so patient with me. Last question is, um, a suggestion was made to make improvements throughout the length of the alley uh, in the back of these two buildings from one end to the other. Um, based on what you know about the alley and its condition and any obstructions, is it is the is that feasible to to improve the surface of that alley to make it a a legitimate sixteen-foot wide traveled space with a with a competent surface?
Um, I don't know specifically about the obstructions, and and I can't commit to saying that there will be exactly sixteen feet of clear width. Um, that's that's the typical width of the right of way of the alley, which means that's the property that the city has authority over outside of public property. Um, but yeah, there are multiple options for repairing or replacing that asphalt alley um, so that it's in good condition when the building's opened. Um, we could require them to remove and replace the entire asphalt and recompact it with new base, pave new asphalt um, in the in the, um, if there if we determine that it's in decent, if the surface is in decent shape, there there are options to do like a seal coat on top of it to preserve the the lifetime of that asphalt, so.
Great, okay. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hey, Brandon, uh, relative to the these buildings having sort of hotel-like density, is there sprinkler requirements, anything like that? And I guess relative to what is sort of the the fire flow capacity in that area, any anything known about that?
Yeah, so, um, at the time of site plan submittal, we don't have all of the details for the building, you know, the the final architectural plans. Um, so, and this is not just applicable to this project, it's any project. It's really hard to say for certain, you know, what what they're going to need for sprinklers or or fire flow for those sprinklers.
When does that get figured out?
Um, at the time of building permit, so, um, you know, when they, uh, assuming they get site plan approval, then the next step is they go to our building department. And, um, he reviews it, the building department reviews it to for compliance with the International Building Code and the International Fire Code.
Gotcha. And I guess, well, I got you here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if if you think like the multimodal nature of transportation in in downtown and adding some mixture of on the low end, a mix of eighty-eight bikes, eighty-eight cars, right? Maybe and it's probably in there somewhere. Wh- wh- what's the rigor the city goes through to figure out sort of the? Like, who knows who's going to ultimately wind up in these things? I have no idea. We'll find out. But like, wh- wh- how do you figure out the impact to traffic, parking, et cetera? Well, we don't have to get into parking. That's a whole separate thing. Relative to the impact to traffic downtown, both foot, car, et cetera.
So the, um, as you'll notice, one of the conditions and one of the, um, items in the staff report is that, um, staff is is hoping to consider, even though they are two different buildings and potentially two different owners, we need to consider it as one project because the impact's going to be relatively immediate. So that, um, uh, if if we were considering them separate projects, um, they would not require a traffic study for either building if we considered them separate projects. So, um, I I I think it's appropriate to consider them one project so that we can require a traffic study, which will answer all those questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Better.
Just a logistics question, I guess, a little bit of construction-wise, that's they're basically taking up both lots. So all construction is going to be done from the alley and or Church Street. Uh, how are, I mean, they're basically going to have to close off one lane of Church Street, I would assume, to do construction in there. Has that been addressed at all yet, or how? Um, if that happens during the summertime?
No, it has not been addressed. Uh, we typically won't get into construction phasing at the site plan, um, you know, level. I will say that in order to encroach on any lane or do any sort of traffic control, it requires a totally separate permit through the engineering department, which we review, um, to make sure it complies with, you know, the the federal guidelines for traffic control measures. Um, and I I will say I do do everything I can to avoid um, allowing large disruptions, construction projects in the downtown core during that traffic season. So it's something that will have to be discussed as they as they go to build, and I don't know what the plan would be. I think there's probably an opportunity to use one of the lots as a staging area for building the first building at the at a minimum. Um, and, uh, but I I can say, uh, I I do not expect that they're going to be able to have an entire lane closed off for the duration of the project for staging their construction materials um, and equipment. Um, that's just not really feasible. It it may be closed down to do frontage improvements for the work that's actually out on the street and to do, um, obviously, they're going to be tying some stormwater pipes and some water and sewer services out in Church Street. That obviously will require a full street closure, but that's days at a time, not for the whole summer.
Mr. Mitchell.
Are there restrictions on the use of the alley for that?
Um, there's no specific restrictions on the use of the alley for that. They, you know, they have the option, you know, as applying for the permit to close alleys, and we do it all the time. In fact, um, I I would say I would rather somebody do a construction work in an alley than on a on a public street to impact like constant traffic.
Do you know if there's a directionality to the alley? I mean, can you enter it from both directions, or is it, you know, one-way?
I believe there's access from both sides. Um, we don't have any policy in place that I'm aware of that restricts any valleys to one way, or, you know, um, governs whether you can drive both directions or one direction.
Is there any, um, is there any code about blocking an alley?
Um, yeah, so we do it all the time for construction. I mean, a lot of our sewer mains are actually running through the alley in 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 specific neighborhoods. So you got to shut the whole alley down in order to tap a new sewer sewer lateral. Um, so that's a common occurrence. Um, there's not really a rule. It's just they have to get a permit from the engineer.
Uh, what about like loading and unloading, like with the trash or with, uh, delivery? Like for the commercial zone?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. I would probably have to get back to you. Um, I'm certain there's something in there that says that they can't constantly block it through normal operations. I mean, they've got to provide a clear space for people to use the alley.
Would, uh, Chief Kuhn have something to add to that?
No, I'm calling him out.
We're gonna get our money's worth.
Get your money's worth, and then we come up. Brandon, Brandon's correct. And then the aspect that you can't block the alleyway for the general public, so they're open for access, so you can completely block them off.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Torpey?
I'm gonna ask. I have a couple of questions. Uh, I think for Bill or maybe Jason, um, among the among the commenters, there were interests or questions regarding um, whether these units could become Airbnb. And I believe that is something that the city permits. So what is the city's policy regarding the conversion of any of these units to short-term rentals?
The I well, Leeses could not run them as sublets as a short-term rental, but owners of properties, residential properties in the Commercial A zoning district can obtain short-term rental permits through the city. Um, we limit the number of those permits in our residential districts, but not in the commercial districts in town. So conceivably, units in any commercial zone could be run as short-term rentals if the owner chose to to pursue a short-term rental permit.
Would would be?
The the Leasee cannot come in and get a sub, uh, permit to run the apartment that they're renting as a short-term rental. That's definitely not allowed.
Okay, um, is there any authority of the city that we have to, um, restrict the owner of the owners of these two buildings from um, enabling, uh, any or many of the units to become short-term rentals? Is there uh, authority to prevent that from happening?
So we only have a fixed number of non-owner occupied permits available within the city.
That's not correct, actually, because this is that's only in our.
Oh, you're right. He's he is correct. So in the commercial zone, there is no restriction.
There's nothing in our code, uh, limiting the number of, um, short-term occupancy units in our commercial zone. Yeah, there have been efforts by the state, um, legislature to deregulate all or to, um, strip cities of all powers of regulating short-term rentals that, um, Bill has thankfully failed twice at the state legislature, but I expect it to come back next year, and if we're able to regulate short-term rentals at all in the city of Sandpoint, a year from now, we'll be we'll thankful, but the state's trying to strip cities of the rights to do that across the state of Idaho right now.
And has the city had any conversations with the owners and have any knowledge of their intention on this matter?
Um, we, well, their intention has been stated to be the, uh, most the lowest rent in Sandpoint, so that's that's their stated intention is to make these available for for Sandpoint residents. Of course, if there's not market demand for this type of unit, there's nothing in the law prohibiting them from applying for short-term rental permits. And from the city's perspective, um, you know, there's a a dearth of of hotel space in Sandpoint. Um, we're about to lose the Edgewater Hotel as it becomes, you know, redeveloped in the next couple of years, so uh, the fourteen percent revenue collected from short-term rentals would be very welcome at the city as well. But of course, workforce housing is is stated in our comp plan throughout as an objective, and projects like this are uh, very much intended to be for the local workforce. So the the question is, you know, I think any developer takes their risks when they go into a project like this, whether or not the market will demand this type of unit. So. But again, there's there's nothing in our code prohibiting owners from applying for short-term rental permits in the commercial district.
Yeah, we already said that.
Uh, Commissioner Raymar.
Yeah, please, um, I you can these be condominiumized? Condominimized?
Through a short plat process, that would be a a subsequent development application.
Till later on down the road, these could be condos.
Conceivably, yeah.
No parking.
Through a condo plat.
Mr. Mitchell.
I think the developer mentioned that they plan to hold. I mean, they need to hold for ten years in order for the for the benefit of the OZ zone to matter. I mean.
Commissioners, any more questions for staff? This is where Scott would jump in.
Are we still in the open portion of the meeting?
We're still in the hearing, so, yes.
If there's no more questions, you can close the hearing and proceed to deliberation.
I think before that, I want to take a five-minute recess.
Not before closing the hearing.
Really?
No.
Okay, well.
Do you need to consult with legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay, so if you need to consult with legal counsel, everybody stays where they are. We can take a two-minute break, and you can leave the hearing open for that.
Okay, we're gonna we're gonna take two-minute break. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take two-minute break. Okay, would everybody find your seats and we'll be back. We're gonna open the hearing back up. Okay, we're, we're still open. Corrected. Thank you. So once again, if commissioners have any more questions before we close the hearing, this is the last opportunity.
Oh, who's the clarifying? That's all we can.
Yeah.
For clarification, you can still ask questions of staff during deliberations. If it's related to evidence that already has come in during the public hearing, what you can't do is ask questions to elicit new information that wasn't already discussed and or identified during the public hearing process.
So anything new to bring up? Now is the time after this. Yeah, Scott, go ahead.
Thank you. I have one follow-up question for staff and maybe our legal counsel, if that's appropriate. Um, concerning the question of um short-term rentals. Uh, does the planning and zoning commission have uh authority to condition the approval of this? Uh, to prevent uh the owner from uh making any of these units available for short-term rentals?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Short answer.
Could you hear us? The answer was no.
Okay. Uh, hearing no more questions, uh, the public hearing is now closed. Now, at this time, commissioners may ask questions of staff during our deliberations and you may, we deliberate between ourselves. I ask again that you speak into the mic and you, and you identify who you are before you speak. Commissioner Ryamar.
To the staff, um, my major concern is the question I have is on the alleyway. Okay, I know parking, there's nothing we can do anything about, but the alleyway, which is going to become.
Please speak into the mic.
Oh, the alleyway is going to essentially become a thoroughfare. I mean, for both garbage and it's at 16 foot, I do not think it meets the code for fire. Uh firefighting alley right away. I think those have to be 25. And again, we don't know, we don't have a map of the alleyway showing the the encumbrance of the cities right away by Vista Telephone poles or fire hydrants or anything else on it, restricting the the ability to, to use it for access. And then plus, you're talking about uh waste management and the garbage. I mean, the waste management truck is not, can't turn in 16 feet at all. And so the, the waste management dumpsters are going to have to come out of some enclosure by hand. And then they'll load them and then they'll place them back. But usually waste management doesn't do that. So there's going to have to be a mechanism by which that'll get done. And you said you left it up to waste management and the owners coming to an understanding of how it should be done. Um, on a piece of private property, let's say a commercial project, I can understand that. But in a public alleyway, I think that that should be a concern of the cities also is how you're going to get rid of the debris, where you're going to store the snow. So the way I see it right now is the alleyway seems to be massively restricted. And I wonder if the plans for the building couldn't be changed, the footprint such that you could create a slightly larger alleyway. Um, you know, whether on your upper floors, you overhang the alleyway above 14 feet and allowing vehicles to get in and out or some way to create a bigger alleyway. So the question, can that be done?
Brandon Staglin, City Engineer, uh, I, okay, there's a lot of questions there. The, the question about can we widen the alley? Um, the, again, the, the 16 feet is the width of the right-of-way, not the width of the pavement, right? So you can't really widen that piece of property without exacting property from private property owners, whether it's this one or somebody else.
I'm, that's exactly what I'm asking. I mean, I'd like to see that, to get that alleyway to be sufficient to meet the demands that are going to be required of it.
I, I, I do not believe that that is supported by code that, to allow us to um take additional right-of-way for that, for that alleyway.
Well, I'm not saying you take it. Uh, we just come back with different plans.
So, and then the, the other question I wanted to just address about the fire access. All drive surfaces don't need to meet that, that uh fire access width. So what they do and they, when they do a fire review is they make sure that there is a fire lane where a fire truck can park and pull its hoses out. And those hoses have to reach a certain distance from that point and reach all parts of the building. So um yeah, the, the alley may or may not be, need to be used for fire access. It's not a, it's not a foregone conclusion that that alley is going to count as a fire lane.
Okay, so it will be reviewed by whatever official, Christine or the fire chief, as to whether that alley will be sufficient enough to uh meet any, and if it isn't, then it'll fall upon the onus of the owners of the developers of the property to increase the size of the alley off of their private property or?
Yeah, they, they'll just have to figure out how they're going to make the project work. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and it's, it's Pete is the building official. Christine's not here anymore yet and, and Gavin, the, the fire chief.
Um, see if I had any other questions for you. Um, and again, you know, the, the alleyway looks like it will be the only, at least what I can see right here, the only place that you're going to have any ADA loading or unloading area with a ramp. So again, you're going to have to, uh, in some way or form, encroach upon outside of the right-of-way of the cities, right-of-way of the alley to be able to create, create that. I mean, it could be an area for loading and unloading UPS, et cetera, but it also needs to be an area for unloading and loading ADA.
So the, the city has a dimensional standards for how big a parking space needs to be?
Yeah.
And when they show parking spaces that they're going to use off that alley, they have to fit on their private property.
Okay. Okay, um, so unless there's any other for you, I'll need one right of ways, I'll be moving alleyway. Nope, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunkel.
Commissioner Weber.
Just to speak on the topic of the fire access and fire apparatus comment that was in the public packet, I wonder if the city could just discuss the comments that were made by an outside jurisdiction um on the capacity of our fire department to, uh, fortunately, our fire chief is here tonight, so he's going to come up and spur that. Thank you.
Right, I admit this new guy.
Good evening, Chief Gilchrist, Fire Chief, City of Sandpoint. What can I help you with?
Commissioner Weber.
Chief, thank you. Um, just a question on the, the comment that was provided by Selkirk Fire District, specific to this project, kind of. Yeah, asked about the capacity.
Hey, I don't think, is this? We okay?
Information line? It was in the public. It was in the public packet.
That's it. So we can, we can speak on the public packet information on this, but no new information on this exactly, right?
If he wants to ask a question about the comment that was made that's in the public packet, he can ask a question about that comment.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page.
Alright, thank you. Um, so just the question of the, that was the question of the capacity to address fires and issues with this development came up and um, just wanted to hear from the city's fire department directly on that.
Um, I read that uh comments, that was a ways back. I'm just going off of memory, but um, so when we get to the point where it goes through permitting, um, we review everything and everything has to be done according to the fire code. That includes uh whether it needs to be sprinkled, uh, the fire flow that's needed, uh, the access uh for, you know, getting in and around, out and around the building. Um, we've talked about um alleyways, things like that. Traditionally, I mean, if there's a way, we'll look at it, but traditionally, we don't even count on alleyways. If that makes sense, because the city doesn't maintain the alleyways. Some of them are, some of them are more impassable than others because they rely on private, you know, property. And I think that's, that's just a code deal. That's not, um, that's not us, but that's uh like a city code deal. So, um, but yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to go through it and whatever they have to have as far as fire life safety, um, they have to meet those requirements 100%. We do not, we don't deviate from that. So. Thank you. Is that, is that it? Good?
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Another question. Um, there's kind of maybe a discussion point, but it's specific to the building design standards that this project needs to meet and um one of the first code items there, and one of that was commented upon and uh it's in the staff report about the scale. So the question of um and does this building fit the character of Sandpoint? Does it fit the scale and the massing of Sandpoint? And this is addressed in our comprehensive plan. Um, it's kind of fitting into the context of the neighborhoods. And also, I mean, there's this project's doing a lot of, checking a lot of boxes in terms of a comprehensive plan, like creating uh potential for workforce housing, um, you know, downtown urban design, storefront character along the street. And I applaud all those efforts. Um, but specific to this, the first item on code. The commercial code talks about new buildings or additions shall either be similar in size and height or if larger, be articulated and subdivided proportionally to the mass and scale of other structures on the same block. Um, and they refer to the Burn Cloud Building down the street and um Sandpoint Center as well. That's kind of, we're kind of, we're similar to these structures in scale. But I think what this project maybe doesn't accomplish is the stepping quality that those projects exemplified. Um, that are more proportional to the scale of other structures. Um, and this code actually specifies the same block, which if you look at this block, it's just two stories, up to two stories. So I think, I think that doesn't necessarily meet the same block, the code of that intent of that code. It seems pretty clear to me, um, in terms of the scale, this block being an extruded footprint, 45 feet. Um, doesn't really respond to any structures on the same block as it, it resides. Um, that's kind of one of the larger concerns I had with the, this project coming through to code, um, and meeting the code requirements in the planning department. Now, staff might never thought on the, the scale of this project and what it meant, but um, or what your interpretation of that code item is, but, or if the commission has some thoughts in this as well.
Sure, thank you. I, I really actually think this is more of a conversation for the commission to have than, um, I think our work is presented in the staff report. Um, interestingly, we, we thought long and hard about that exact provision. Lots of different ways to look at it. Um, there's not a lot of blocks anywhere in downtown with things over two stories. So following that logic, logic, you would never see anything taller than two stories. Um, so at some point, someone made the decision across the street that there was going to be a 65-foot tall building, which is, you know, on the same block. Depending on how you want to look at what a block is. So, um, we thought long and hard about that and looked in the vicinity and looked in the environs and said, well, what's here that's, what's here that's similar? Obviously, right next door. Um, nothing, right? Immediately adjacent, nothing is remotely similar to this. Um, but in the larger context of downtown, the building materials, the size of the building across the street. Recent, relatively recent building, 40 feet tall, a block and a half away. Um, that's what led us to conclude that the comp plan was aspirational in trying to um pursue development of that scale. But that's precisely why this is before you, so that you can debate and discuss that and arrive at a, a finding or not, uh, because those are interpretive um policies and they need to be interpreted by the permit authority, which is now you.
Yeah, I think just follow up on that. Just my reading of that code, the, to be articulated and subdivided proportionally to the mass and scale of other structures on the block, if larger, I think buildings can be taller than other structures on this block, but they also need to respond in, you know, proportionally and in in scale and in areas of the building, like the Burn Cloud does. It steps up one story and it's two stories and then the three. And of course, the Sandpoint Center steps up all the way to the, yes, there are three floors that it is, so.
Commissioner Simmons, I think you have something to say, man?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, this is, this is Commissioner Simmons. We, this is part of the fun of being a commissioner is trying to think through all the questions you want to ask and enumerate it in such a way that you're, you know, half the job is trying to figure out what's the question to ask. And I guess I would say relative to absorbing that much of a burden in one spot in one place. It, when we wrote the comp plan and we were sitting up here writing it, we never conceived, right? Such that it would, you know, if you could tell me that we could absorb 88 long-term apartments throughout the downtown corridor, I'd love it, but just all in one, in one place. It's just a heck of a lot to figure out, like, what is going to be the impact of this? And then what if it is short-term rentals? And then you say, well, there's nothing in the code as a backstop to say it can't be, right? So, right, it's, it's trying to figure out like, what is the right sort of question to ask to make sure that the impact to what we know about sand points remains intact? And this is net good for the community. But again, I mean, the only thing that we can look at is planning and zoning code. Right? And there's not a heck of a lot to say that this can't happen, right? It, it could have gone higher. Got to start putting in an elevator, but you know what I mean? So, and ultimately, if you think about wanting footsteps downtown, this gets you there. Right? Which is sort of cool, but like the long-term, like what does this thing sort of end up looking like in 10, 15 years? I don't know, right? It probably morphs into something else entirely. If it's what it's intended to be, I mean, I can't wait to hear the nicknames this place, you know, gets in terms of, there's going to be a lot of hooking up, right? But you know. No, the point is, is that it, it's hard to consider what is it that we're ultimately getting? And then what is it within sort of the bounds of this job to ensure that we get what's intended? You know what I mean?
Hundred percent. To tag on that, Commissioner Dunkel. I I think this is a very interesting uh app, application and I don't want to I don't want to say that the code is being 100% taken advantage of, but it feels like feels like we've, we're seeing something that we're, applicant is definitely asking for everything. I mean, may, maybe there's a little more they could, I don't know for, for sure, but, and I'm not going to say that's like, you know, what would I do? You know, I might do the same thing. I might ask for it to be a different color or something that everybody would hate even more, but the, the part that I have a problem with, that I'm not quite, that I, that I see an issue with, that I think will come up very soon is the alley access is, is, it's going to be a, a point for loading, unloading garbage. Um, the, the access for anybody that's handicapped. I have concerns about how, how much space there is available for that to work really well. And and I don't, I don't, I don't understand the three parking spaces on, on the one side. And I don't, I don't, I don't understand the three parking spaces on, on the one side. I think that's pretty cool for that side, um, I don't know if that's enough for a, a loading zone and a. Um, handicap access at the same time, and then one other parking spot, which to me, that space would be big enough for. Just a loading zone, like, nobody can ever park there, which I think kind of goes, like, now we're losing even more parking, but. Um, if the loading zones are in the front on the street. Then we're losing even more parking there too, so. That's what I'm having a hard time uh, making work, because even if nobody in this building has a car.
Yeah.
There's still a need for emergency access, there's a need for commercial access for loading and unloading. Which will, if not an adequate space, will affect the neighboring property owners for their alley access. And. Uh, and I, I don't think an alley should ever be blocked for any period of time, because. We're talking about the, I mean, you could go around the block and get around, I guess. But uh, even aside from, like, if a fire truck goes and parks in the alley, for any period of time, which we know, like. That, that's never gonna be in question of their ability to access it or their right to access it, but for. Um, UPS or Amazon or whoever to deliver um, products to the um. To the commercial spaces. Cause there's no doubt that the, those spaces will have to have deliveries, um. And while that's happening, I feel like there should be space available for, um, you know, EMS. Or, or if there's a police call, or, you know, somebody in distress or something like that. So I think I would be in favor of there being a very, very nice-sized designated space. I mean, I would prefer to be on both locations, um, which makes sense for the amount of uh, population that could be in each building. It could be eighty-eight spaces, it could be almost two hundred people, potentially. With the commercial space occupied as well, with employees and, and customers, so. Uh, that would be something I, I would wanna see, and then, um. And I think the city, and just to put it in the record, the, the city should, and it has been brought up, that the city should um, really look at the loading zone in front. Cause it is way closer to the commercial space, but, um. But it's taking away the parking spaces, because normally when you make it a loading zone, there's no parking there, um, which is aggravating for. Somebody looking for a parking spot when there's a space that's open most of the time. So for those reasons, I, I think we have to add, we have to figure out a way to make that work, and then with the recent discussion about the stepped. Step-back um, space, I think that's, that's not a big ask, because that's something that we've asked for just. I mean, I can't think of anywhere where we have not asked for that, and that is in the comp plan, and it is, it's. It's documented how, how many times that, that has been imposed, and this, I don't see that this has any step back at all. I don't think that de- decreases the, the number of spaces by very much either, well, maybe the number of spaces, but not the number of space, so. Um. Something else, um. Oh, and uh, with the amount of walking. In the, in the area that just also in the record that crosswalks in the area are probably gonna need a significant amount of improvement or, or. Lighting or, you know, something like that, which I can see people crossing Fifth Avenue a lot more, you know, with this situation, which. Once again, that's something for the review process that I think will be adequately taken care of, but I just wanted to mention that. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banner.
Just to follow up on your alley concerns, with the revision of Fifth Avenue, getting into that alley is. Not the easiest one to get into, especially if you're coming west on Fifth Avenue. Because of the traffic backed up or stopped there at the light, so that, that it actually even adds a little more difficulty. Plus, all those other businesses along the road on Pine Street all get their parking and business from the alley, not from Pine Street. So that's just, there's more in that alley than, I think, just this building going in. Including the Christian Science parking lot there, so.
I mean, can I make a comment?
Commissioner Mitchell.
I mean, I, I really liked the um, step, I mean, I think that's an important element that's missing in the plan. With the alley, I mean, I agree, I mean, I, I mean, how many Amazon deliveries am I having in my house every day, multiply that by eighty-eight. Um, it's gonna cause a problem, but I do wonder like how the city is able to burden one owner on the alley. And not all of the owners on the alley, um, you know, uh, the, the, the doctor who spoke earlier. Um, who put in spaces for her patients, is she getting, is she receiving? Uh, packages and commercial deliveries on that alley, or is the cell clerk building using that alley for that? So, I mean, I think it's important that there's either a loading, unloading space off a church. Or that there's some kind of solution is there, but, you know, burdening two parcels on a street with. Sixteen parcels is, I, I don't know if, you know, maybe that would be a question for Fonda or for the lawyers. But it seems like that would cause a burden on one landowner that's not uh, on all of the owners.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying for sure, um, I think it's just a question of density at this point, and then we'll say like, um. You know, uh, be careful what you ask for, what you wish for, you know, we've, we've talked about in all my time here, we've talked about. More density and affordability and workforce style um, housing, and, and I. Happy to say that we've, we're seeing that, but um, I think it's just a question of the density, you know, if this was spread out over the whole block. I mean, potentially, there could be another application, you know, well, it probably wouldn't get this far, but uh. Uh, there could be an application, you know, for more of these in other vacant areas and, and the downtown core. Um, and I think, I think these are reasonable things to ask for too, so. I mean, we could add, or we can require it, and if the applicant isn't into it, then. There's the next step in the process would happen, so. I think it's not a huge thing to, to, to ask for in the, as a concession to the community and to, to this body. Um, to, to help make it happen so that, kind of like, everybody's getting well, something of what we want, and it, and it looks, looks better in our eyes too.
Can you clarify what, what the commission is referring to when they're talking about?
Yeah, that was exactly my question, yeah.
Step back, are we talking about from the alley or building height or what? Step back with regards to what?
From my, from my perspective, it would be um, the adjacent property owners, I'm not sure about the alley. Or, or definitely not in between each building, um. I think mostly what I, what we've seen is a step back have been of neighbor, neighboring property owners.
So when you're saying step back, you're referring to of the building's height or setbacks from the property line?
No, step back height at the property line or adjacent to the property line?
So just to clarify what's in our code, there are s- um, step back requirements at, for any structures taller than forty-five feet. Ten percent of the, the depth of the property, um, the building must be stepped back above forty-five feet by that amount, so. If you wanted to go to fifty-five feet at this location, the property is, I think, a hundred and twenty feet deep. Uh, there would be required a ten, a twelve-foot step back for any levels above forty-five feet, we don't have anything in our code that requires a step back. Uh, for any structure below forty-five feet in height, that's how a developer achieves a sixty-five foot height. In Sandpoint though, they must adhere to the step back requirement, so there's nothing in code that would require us to impose a. A, a, a step back from the street frontage, um, when the building's only forty-five feet tall, just to clarify.
Commissioner Dunkle. Commissioner Weber.
Aside from the, i- if this, if this commission determines that there's an incompatibility with the Jason or. Build, buildings on the, on nearby blocks, um, as was referenced in the staff report, this commission could condition that. Uh, one, one challenge to point out on this property though is that these are extremely narrow lots.
Yeah. Commissioner Weber.
Uh, my thinking on this, the step back or the articulated and reduced scale to match the other. Massing in that block would be along the street frontage more so. As it impacts the public more on that side versus an individual lot on either side. That's what I would maybe see is something occurring on that front yard. Step, uh, front yard, front yard.
On the church side?
Church side of the building, um, stepping back as the building gets taller off that road. Relative to the other buildings on that block, so.
So I think at, at this point, specificity is gonna be really important, um. We need to understand that more, um, that's pretty wide open, um, in terms of what. You, you mean, maybe for me to understand it, I'd like some more specificity, Chair, if that's appropriate, I, I don't know what that means, um. We're, we're talking about a site planner view permit that's got very detailed specs in terms of the massing, its height, its setback, so if. The commission is inclined to um, propose some kind of a modification to the facade of the building. Uh, it, it's gonna have to be pretty specific in order for us to understand it.
Thank you. Commissioner Banner.
Just to go back at here again to the parking, like you're talking about in the alley in that part, and even the walkway between the buildings and stuff. Uh, nobody's addressed the snow removal, and nobody removes snow from the alley as it stands right now. Who's gonna take care of those parking lots and where's that snow gonna go, uh, over the course of time? So.
Do we know where it goes now?
Uh, snow removal in the downtown district is the responsibility of the city, if, if, the, the way we do snow removal in our downtown cores, it's a, a. Truck and haul system, so any snow that was pushed out of the alley into the street would be hauled away by our street crew, and it would be blown into the back of a dump truck. This happens between three and six AM in the morning, which is why there's no street parking downtown, we, we plow curb to curb. So snow removal would continue in the manner that it currently does, where street crews haul it away and take it to an off-site location, which I believe is still north of Super One. Where we store our snow in the winter, so that's, snow removal would continue to be handled by the city, if the um, owners of this property hired a private plow crew. To push snow out into the street, that would have to be coordinated with the city so that the city could remove it as they do in other private developments downtown. But the city will not plow the alleys.
No, but somebody's gonna have to, I mean, that's, plus the parking.
Well, I, I would, I would also point out that there's probably twenty or thirty parking spaces accessed via that alley currently, this project's only proposing three.
Yeah.
So the adjacent property owners are currently maintaining the alley so that they can have their access to their private parking spaces and. So they're, they're actually including fewer parking spaces than are currently provided in that alley by existing properties. So that the, the responsibility for maintenance is already on the private property owners.
Okay.
Uh, Chairman, I, I'd like to um, make a comment about the alley and, and ask for um. Everyone's thoughts on whether or not we, we would like to, um, if we were to approve this project. To add a condition that would state specifically to resurface the alley after completion of construction. I have a feeling somehow this alley is gonna uh, physically pay some price for the construction of these buildings. So to uh, to restore uh, to a standard acceptable to the city. I assume that would be pavement, because it's pavement now, um, throughout its length, and so if we could um, maybe get everyone's thoughts on that. Whether that's something that we wish to um, add to the list, if we were to approve this, add to the list of conditions. Um, that the city has um, proposed to us.
Isn't that in the, isn't that in the conditions?
Yeah.
Commission number nine already, almost, it's just.
Commissioner Torby, I, I believe that is in there unless you're asking for something different.
Well, uh, what's in there is uh, the condition, I, I believe reads, as it, as it's written, uh, reads that uh, something about gravel. Which uh, Bill, our planner, uh, indicated needed to be corrected, and it only refers to the frontage or the alley frontage of the two buildings. And not the, not the entire length of the alley, so uh, it would be a modification or rewrite of condition number nine.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Simmons.
This, I don't know how to express it, but this alley is sort of a real issue, you know what I mean, like. It will be a de facto thoroughfare until there's so much snow that all problems back out into the surrounding areas. Um, and, I, I guess, so if we think sort of broadly about. There's not, I, I mean, if we think about pickup drop-off, if we think about, um. You know, loading, unloading, bike pedestrian ingress, egress, that. I, I don't know what sort of provisions we can bake in around, because it's, I mean, it's gonna be pretty darn impactful. You know what I mean, and especially relative to the snow removal, and so I know that, that a lot of that is still on the docket to get in. Right, in terms of, of the traffic report, but, um, you, you know, I. Without knowing that stuff, I, there's, man, it's a tough one, you know what I mean?
I'm sorry, the hearing, you know, opportunity to speak is closed. So what, I'm gathering what Commissioner Simmons is, is uh, getting at is that we require. A condition of approval would be a requirement for a specific uh, adequate loading zone.
For, is that a thing?
That is not in the alley, right, that's on property, um. Or that's in the, that's in the current proposed parking areas or. Or more?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly, this is Commissioner Simmons, I'm not exactly sure how to sort of size it, but. Um, y- you know, I, I, I think dedicating one as a loading, unloading seems probably pretty reasonable. For a unit, if it's something we could break in provisionally, but I mean, that's, that's one thing.
Mr. Mayor Reimer.
Uh, thank you, and I'll be asking legal, um, my concern is that, um, we're talking about substantial amount of conditions here. That, we don't really understand the codes that really truly apply to it. And I believe what concerns we have is gonna require a new design. Uh, of the building, wh- where it's adjacent to the alleyway, if not the whole building, at least some area down below. So, I mean, rather than, our, our choices are to set conditions, A, B, send back for more information?
You can table your decision pending additional information from staff if you would choose. The conditions that are already provided by staff, um, have already been reviewed by the applicant. The applicant's option, should you add more conditions, would be of course just to appeal your decision to counsel. To look for a different decision, and if they don't like that, they can file a petition for judicial, judicial review with the court. For you acting arbitrarily and capriciously or for a takings analysis for you exacting more from them than is required of our code. So they have a lot of options depending on the types of conditions that you intend to place on. Or wish, wish to place on this application.
Okay.
Second to that, you can um, add, you can add those tonight, and then it's their choice to do what they're gonna do. You can table this and ask for additional information, then we'd have to make a decision whether or not to reopen the public hearing based on the new information. That you may receive that could help you and that they can respond to once you receive the additional information. I don't know what you would be looking for, but you'd have to articulate that tonight, so if your request tonight is to table this for additional information. You have to be specific as to what information you're looking for.
Got it.
So if they, and I'm just tackling the alley, condition of it, that we were to return, return it. Saying that because the plan, and I've only seen a plan on this little eleven by ten screen. Um, of the alleyway, I don't really know what the plan looks like and, and what it's like, and I, I, none of us are in the business. Necessarily that we would understand all those applicable codes, so I'm not trying to get the city into some sort of legal action. But at the same time, it seems almost, I, I hate to use the word ludicrous, but almost ludicrous for us to put conditions. About something that we can't really truly understand on the. on the project. I am just trying to say is that right now the one area of the project that I'm personally concerned about is that alleyway. I'm familiar with the alleys in Sandpoint, I'm real familiar with them. And they are, I mean, they look like the Ho Chi Minh Trail in nineteen seventy-two. So, I mean, they're tough. And, uh, you know, I think we really need to address that issue, but I'm asking, is you as legal counsel and the other commissioners, what do you want to do? Set conditions or set it back for another plan to come away or, you know, just addressing the alleys?
Okay, can I, can I speak?
Mr. Mitchell.
I mean, like, by, look, I don't like this plan. Um, I'm gonna make my, oh, sorry, I don't like the plan so much, I don't like the look of the building. That would seem to fall under capricious in my mind, like, and I feel like the alleyway is becoming a point like, how do I reject the plan by finding a a point that this, that these people have to deal with and no one else has to deal with? I mean, you you know, when we're talking about snow removal, somebody's removing the snow this year. You know, this past year, I mean, and plus there's not five feet of snow in downtown Sandpoint, um, which was mentioned earlier.
Long have you lived here?
Long enough to never see five years of snow in downtown.
Ninety-six, ninety-seven.
Anyway, um, somebody's removing the snow and the city's taking it out of the alleyways, people are accessing it in the winter and in the summer. Um, the traffic of the alleyway is significant, um. But i- if it can be addressed on the alleyway versus the street, you know, can we put a condition that the city grant them two space, two spaces of parking on Church Street for a load, no load zone? I mean, I, what I'm, what I'm trying to get, what I want to know from, um, legal counsel is do we have to decide, or do we have to make our decision based on the based on the code, like this compliance with the code or with the fact that we don't like the the massing of the building or the the, you know, who's gonna remove the snow, and I I don't think the condition that they resurfaced the alley is unreasonable either. Uh, Commissioner Torby's, um, idea is good. Um, but I, where do you cross, where do we cross the line between like, they comply? And even if we hate the project, we have to say yes versus yeah, so that I I don't know how to make the decision is what I mean.
So I I, um, empathize with all of you, this is a difficult application, I've been here for a very long time, I've watched most of you grapple with some very difficult, high conflict issues that have come before you, so I'm feeling a sense of needing more time to think and to process through the all of the information that you received tonight. If if that's what you need to do and to do that, you might need to understand more of how what you've heard and the concerns you heard comply or don't comply with Sandpoint City Code, then your most prudent response this evening is to make a motion to table your decision to a date certain, which would be your next meeting. And in the meantime, wrestle with the record that you have in front of you and the facts that you've heard and how they apply to the standards of review that you have and ask the questions related to code that you certainly can't ask of me and of Bill or Jason between now and the next meeting, you have the right to do that. So, um, it it just, I don't feel like any of you are at a place where you are feeling very confident about a vote based on what you've heard tonight because the volume of information is so much.
May I, may I, Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
I think, I think if I had encapsulate what I'm hearing about alleys is, uh, you you have, you have a concern about the the performance of the project as it relates to, um, loading in in the alley and and how that might function. So like, like Fonda mentioned, um, it's, it's you know, probably a good idea to, um, give yourself the the benefit of a little bit of time to think about that. Um, there's a lot of information that's been presented tonight, you've heard a lot. You know, th- these, these are big decisions and I don't, I don't, um, I want to encourage the commission to not feel rushed. Um, and to take the time if you need it. Uh, the other, the other sort of category that, um, you touched on a little bit was the uh, the the degree to which you have some flexibility in, um, talking about architecture as relates to try to make that finding that that Commission Member Weber, um, uh, was talking about, so I encourage you to to think about that as well, what you heard, what that means, um, what's been proposed. Um, just re-familiarize yourself again, maybe after what you've heard, maybe walk the neighborhood by yourself. Um, don't talk to your, don't talk to anybody in the neighborhood, put on a different colored hat, whatever it may be to but, um, just to, just to reflect a little bit on what you've heard and maybe give you a chance to re- do the staff report again, um, I I just think that um, there's been a lot of information provided tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Reimer.
Uh, I make a motion that we, uh, table this until the next meeting and we take advantage of where we're legally allowed to do and communicate with planning and zoning and, uh, I don't know.
Counsel?
Right, I got the council and whether or not the, um, owners or that, I mean, whether or not they would also utilize that time to maybe hope reduce our concern.
So, just for clarification, the applicants have no obligation to respond to what they've heard tonight, they only have to respond to whatever your final decision is.
Just asking out of the kindness of their heart.
So they may, you are correct. And if they do make modifications, what might have to happen is a reopening of the hearing to present that information, just that's not problematic, but just so that you know, process wise, that's what would happen.
Okay, so the motion I have is to table it.
To the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
And the, and the reason is general
That you just
gather, gathering of general information about code and
Yeah.
No.
No.
You just need time to think about the information that you've heard to review the staff report again in relationship to what you heard tonight and to process through how you intend to apply the facts to the standards of review and any additional conditions that you may want to try to impose.
Okay, we have a motion?
Good second.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, who was the second?
Uh, Commissioner Weber.
Discussion?
I don't, you don't discuss tables, right?
Yeah.
You can, but we
Uh, except for quite another question for legal on the opening of a, um, hearing. Does that process have to occur during a public hearing or is?
So if new information needs to come in for you to make your decision, is that what you're questioning?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so if there was new information that needed to come into the record for you to be able to deliberate, then the applicant has the opportunity to know what that information is and respond to it, it's called due process rights. And so the public hearing would be reopened for that purpose if it was necessary.
Does it have to be noticed?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor to table.
Uh, and Oh, Mr. Chair, real quick, are we allowed to sort of for open discussion? Because, you know, quite frankly, I'm sort of curious where everybody's heads at right now. Relative to open communication amongst the council. Um, but
No.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Commission.
Okay.
First of all, it's commissioned, but what open communication are you referring to?
Well, like, later on when we have our commissioner roundtable. Is anything, is is this allowed to be a a discussion within that?
No.
Got it, that's my question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, if we, if we table, uh, we're, so we're wait to table for two weeks, um, that wouldn't give enough time to notice any new information.
No, if you, so what would happen is if between now and two weeks from now it's identified that maybe the information you want to consider in deliberations is new, we would present that information to the applicant, then that hearing would actually be noticed and it would be moved out further for reopening the hearing. That you are required by Idaho code, if you're going to table this decision tonight, to just table this decision with the record that you have for a date certain, which makes sense to be the next meeting.
And during that time, could we correspond with city staff?
Yes.
Freely?
Yes.
And could all of us be on that?
No.
No.
Just
Absolutely not.
Individually. Oh, yeah, I love it.
For the public's knowledge, that's considered a serial meeting, so we try to remove the reply all button from every keyboard of an elected or a appointed official because it's the worst button on the keyboard, so no, you can correspond individually, you cannot discuss at all with each other.
Keep it clean, yeah.
Please do.
Okay, so before we vote on the motion to table, we, we can, I would accept a a motion to approve or deny. Uh, that would also be available right now too. And and not table. So if anybody's feeling like they're ready to vote or they're ready to make a motion, then now would be the opportunity.
You have a motion second on the floor, so you have to take a vote on that motion and second. And then if it fails, you can move forward with a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
Okay.
Sorry.
Point of order.
Sorry.
Okay, well, let's vote on the, on the motion to table.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
No.
Commissioner Remar?
Yes.
Commissioner Torby?
No.
Commissioner Benner?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Chair, motion fails.
Okay. So now I would entertain a motion to approve or deny with, if there was a condition.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benner.
I've got a couple conditions that I would like to add on to it besides, uh, the one condition already that was talked about for number nine about changing that to, uh,
Okay.
But one of them was the trees, to address the trees on Church Street, if those at all could be retained. Using the city's staff to, uh, forester to work with the applicant on that. And, uh, another one would be to make sure there's a loading zone available either at the, in the back of the buildings or on Church Street to serve the those units. And then, uh, any changes to this project, uh, would come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah.
Those would be three conditions I would like to add to it for discussion.
Um, I would support the loading, personally, I would support the loading zone, um, language. Um, I think, I think we have an opportunity to get at least a loading zone in the front and back with some, some sort of, because that's not gonna change the building or change much. I don't know if we're gonna get that for both buildings. So that's probably, I would be amenable to that. As far as the trees go, just personally, I I think there's a pretty strong commission in the city that deals with urban forestry that is definitely gonna be looking at that, I I would imagine, so.
And that's why I just wanted the condition for them to look at, yeah.
And, um, so Brandon, do you have a, can you comment on that? Because I think, I think, uh,
Uh, yeah, Brandon Staglin, I I just want to clarify so that it's really clear what the condition is. The, um, as it stands now, every tree that gets removed in the right of way um, has to at least have the written approval from the urban forester. But it gives them the option of taking it to council and or the tree commission. So my suggestion would be to add that, you know, the condition of who who else you want to approve removal of any of those trees. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, I just want to make sure it's really specific, you're, you know, that you're asking for the entities that you want to review it and approve it before.
So Brandon, just for clarification, by code, Eric, our urban forester, is already going to evaluate whether or not it's appropriate for removal.
That's correct.
And then he would have been the one to decide whether to get that request blessed by council or the tree commission.
That's correct, that's how.
This condition only needs to identify do they want council or the commission or leave it to the discretion of Eric? Which if they're gonna do that, it's all gonna be handled by code. So it doesn't need to be a condition.
Okay.
Unless you, unless you want to specifically say who reviews in addition to the urban forester, council or the tree commission.
And Brandon, if you would be so kind as to help us understand who has the authority to stripe a loading zone in a public right of way? If it's at staff level or if that's a council?
That's staff level. I want, I want to try to remain neutral on it, but I I just do want to give some more information, um. If if you decide, you know, if, uh, let me say this, if the city decided to stripe loading zones specifically for this building, um, you're giving away parking space in the right of way that used to be open to all the public and dedicating it directly to this building. If you make that a condition of the approval, you're essentially saying that they, they get those parkings, they get that space in the right of way for a loading zone. Um, it would be hard, I think it would be difficult if that was acted upon as a condition to, you know, to take that away in the future, so just be aware of that.
What, what does, um, the, uh, Bridge Street, uh, building do? Uh, the Cedar Street, excuse me, Cedar Street, um, uh, market? As far as, there's no other way to get there except by the front door, it seems, unless you're walking from the San Creek Trail, but for loading and unloading, it's right in front of that building and it's not striped, is it?
Um, I I believe it's striped, no parking. Um, I
Right in front of the building? Oh, okay.
Answer specifically, um, I know there are signed and striped, no parking. Um, I don't, I don't know how they actually load
You might know.
Down there, um, it's been a while since I've been walking around downtown at you know, three in the morning when those loading zones would happen, so I don't know.
I work right across, they'd load all day, trucks stop there all day.
In the middle of the street, right?
Right, well, in the, in the red stripe zone.
Yeah.
So what is the, what is the required loading zone dimension? Or what is the dimension of a loading zone in as, from your view?
I, I don't know if it's, uh, I don't know if, I don't believe it's specifically called out for dimensions in the code, but I would suggest that it's the length of a normal parallel on-street parking space. That would make sense to me. At a minimum. And I don't recall that distance exactly, I believe it's twenty-five feet.
Mr. Chairman, why are we, so asking a question, trying to be friendly about it. Why are we discussing something that we know nothing about, but he does, and they're gonna make the decisions with the city? It seems like we're beating a dead horse here, I don't understand what's going on. I'm serious, I mean, it's what are we doing?
Bill?
If, just to, just to help, um, I think that the issue is as I understand it, just trying to gather and understand the parameters surrounding how loading spaces are, um, apportioned, and so Brandon clarified that that's a staff level decision. Um, we just took a look at Google Maps and there's a, there's a, it looks like two parking spaces are striped in front of the um, the building there on First, um, for, you know, uh, no parking, loading only from seven AM to five, uh, PM. So, um, that gives some context, but, um, just for clarity, it's a, it's a, you know, it's something the condition, a condition that the commission could impose. Um, whether or not you choose to do so based on what you've learned. I I don't think there's much more to it than that, it's, it's, it's an ability, but it's, it's kind of a big decision for the reasons Brandon stated.
Could we, uh, this is a question for, uh, maybe Fonda, could we, um, uh, say that a, an appropriate loading zone on Church Street is required, and by doing so, as Brandon pointed out, that would eliminate one or two parking spots, and if it does that we, I don't know any other word, would we have the authority to, um, assess a fee for those lost parking spots, uh, consistent with our current code, which I think is ten thousand dollars if you're paying an in-lug fee? Something like that, is is there any support, legal support for that?
No, you don't have anything built into your code or your fee structure that would allow for that.
Okay.
Commissioner Benner? What was the, what was the third? You did, you had three items?
The trees, the loading zones, and then the, uh, The trees, the loading zones, and then the, any change in use would come back to planning and zoning.
I don't believe you said change, I said, I think you said any change to the approved application.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, sorry, thank you.
But a substantial change by law would come back anyways.
Yeah. So I would support the loading zone language in your motion, just to be upfront.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chair, what specifically is that language? Like what, what's that consideration? What's that provision you're proposing?
That there would be a loading zone either in the front or the back of the buildings, loading zone on Church Street or in the back that's usable year-round for not only the residents, but the commercial space.
You can make.
The three part, I think, settled and I think the substantial change is okay, so.
But did you also mention the resurfacing?
Yeah, I said with what was already mentioned for that.
Okay, with what Commissioner Torpey said, yeah.
Can you put that in a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move to approve this application based off of the, excuse me, conditions presented by staff with the modifications to condition number nine as having the alleyway either repaved all of it from one end to the other if necessary, based off of what the city sees appropriate, based off of the construction and any damage that's done to that. And then that a loading zone, condition number ten, a loading zone be added to either the, on Church Street or to the back of the building that's usable year-round.
And for clarification of the motion, he said, motion to approve this application. It's PSR, PSPR two-five dash zero 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 three and PSPR two-five dash zero 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 five Farm and Flats.
Here we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second. Any discussion?
Commissioner Dunkel? I would.
Weber.
Move to, well, click me if I'm wrong, would move to amend to add an additional condition. And that would be to require that the frontage of the structure meet the scale and massing of its surrounding structures, which would be, you know, based off experience that existing areas, two-story buildings, it would, it should be two stories from the first fifteen feet would be my specific recommendation.
Give a motion to amend, do I need a?
You need a second.
We need a second for the amendment to the motion. Do we have a second for that amendment?
If you have no second to the motion to amend, it fails.
Okay, if nobody's interested in a second to that motion, then that motion would fail and we're back to the original motion unamended. And if there's no more discussion, we could do a vote. Hearing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Chair, for clarification, it was moved by Commissioner Benner and seconded by Commissioner Simmons.
Correct.
Commissioner Weber?
No.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
No.
Commissioner Torpey?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. So, like I say, thank you for everybody for showing up and seeing how the process works. This is a very tough, tough thing to deliberate and welcome you back to our next meeting in two weeks, please. And at this time, we have no old business or new business, so we'll move to our final item, which are general matters that staff would like to bring to our attention at this time. Are there anything? No, we're getting kind of late, so we'll move on. And we'll move into the commissioner roundtable. I'd probably suggest that we call it a night as well, unless there's something that is, just has to come up right now.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think we really need to address the issue of the rentals downtown and parking for residential downtown ASAP.
Yep. Good point, I think June seventeenth is our first opportunity to do that and I think we're going to be more prepared. And we have a lot more, we have more experience to draw from now. And it sounds like we're all in favor of that.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of it because that seems to be.
Seventeenth?
Yeah, June seventeenth, five-thirty, eleven-twenty-three West Lake Street. I'd say too, you know, the topic of, you know, the commercial residential idea is, we need to know a little more about that ourselves as far as, like, the setbacks and that type of stuff and the design, the look and the neighbor, and as it fits into the comp plan, too, because as I said earlier, this, people have been, we've been talking about affordable, accessible, density, et cetera, for quite a while. And, and what I see is, you know, this, this is a form of what that looks like.
Anything that just happened, if you're, I think your question is, can we get some education on when residential can be built in the commercial zone and what the rules are related to that?
Exactly.
Okay. The answer is yes.
Okay, if there's no further business on the agenda, we have now adjourned the meeting at eight-thirty. Thank you.